Sewer use fees rates, excuse me, for October 17th, 2018 to January 7th, 2017, 2019, in the amount of $295,320.23.
So we're doing that thing again where we vote after the fact and after people have been bailed?
Yep, this is historical.
I have to review the minutes about...
Yep.
But it just seems like we should do it before.
Well, you got me, I don't know. We should investigate that, I would agree.
Right, yeah, okay.
Do I have our motion to approve?
I would move that we accept the certificate of commitment of sewer user rates in the amount of $295,320.23 for the period between October 17th, 2018, and January 17th, 2019. Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, and all's in favor, 4-0. Now can I get a motion to adjourn as wastewater commissioners and to convene a select board of March 12, 2019?
Still moved.
Second.
All's in favor, 4-0. Thank you very much, and as select board first item, we would ask anybody from the public who has any input on any non-agenda items, please. Mr. French?
And just, John, you'll have to turn the mic on because I noticed it's off.
Turn it on?
Well, when you get up there.
Press the button.
The little button on the microphone.
I have a training for this.
Well, we have a training course for the public.
Red lights on.
Yeah, that means it's off. So the little button will go green.
It's green. Good evening, thank you. I have three things, if it's okay. Do I get three minutes apiece, or how's that gonna work, sir?
Depends how fast you talk.
Okay, the first one is, we're looking for good people to be on the Budget Committee. We are in the process of looking for people that are interested, and we need to have them done by, what is it, October 12th? Is that right? For the...
Charter Committee?
Well, the Budget Committee too, because they have to be on the ballot too, right? For the town meeting. No, no.
That's a budget nominee.
I'm ahead of myself. Anyway, we still need, we still need folks. We still need folks for the Budget Committee. Also, we've got this Charter Commission, which we're trying to get geared up, and we need six people anyway to end up elected by the population of Towne, Camden, to be on this committee, and this is a very important committee, and this is basically, you're gonna be setting the, how the town's gonna operate for the next few years. So hopefully some folks will wanna sign up, get on board, and go with it, because we certainly need some help. And then the third thing is, I'm thinking about, the other night when we were talking about the ambulance thing, and, and then I'm thinking back to what happened, the tragedy that happened in Berwick with the captain.
Yes.
I think this, going down this road with the ambulance is a good thing, and it also starts the road for more things together, because those gentlemen that went in the fire, they were just two. And so hopefully we never have a situation where we have limited manpower. I'm not just, I'm just saying, there was only two folks there, two firefighters. So certainly, it's time to look at doing things together. However, we need to make sure that at least the first piece goes out with a full crew. And so that our people that we send them out, they come home, and they have a way to get home. And that's all I have. And thank you for hearing me out, and keep up the good work.
You're so efficient, thanks, John.
You're welcome. I didn't use three minutes, I don't think.
Not even close.
Not even close.
Probably like a minute and a half.
See you.
Is there anybody else here from the public who would like to speak to a non-agenda item? Not seeing any, we'll move on to select board reports. Jenna?
Good for the moment.
Marco?
I again, just wanna talk about the Opera House, get it out there. There was a band called Ranky Tanky who was here last Wednesday, and it's something that Dave Morrison is developing, bringing some new interesting bands in. They're a band that had a number one album on one of the various Billboard charts, and they're sort of a southern R&B jazz band, which is interesting. And it wasn't a moneymaker, but the people that saw the show said it was perhaps the best show they've ever seen at the Opera House. And it's that level of musicianship and quality that we're working to bring to the Opera House. So as you look at the cards, there's a bunch of cards here, and some of the acts that are coming in, there's some amazing shows, and a couple that I just wanted to mention, Tim Sample, who is a main humorist, will be at the Opera House on Saturday, March 23rd, and it's a benefit for the Bartlett Woods Retirement Community. And the Blue Cafe, which is our Friday night, once a month Friday night event on the third floor, which is free, totally free for everybody, and then there is a bar supplied by Forty, the restaurant Forty Paper. There is a bluegrass band called Miners Creek, and that's this Friday night. So something to think about, just great things happening at the Opera House, and, you know, it's really, it's really great to see, and the music has been terrific this year.
Well, I have to say, Mark, I always hear about the shows at the Opera House, but I've heard a lot about Ranky Tanky, and, you know, what a standing ovation they had at break during the performance, so that was great. They were out of state also, aren't they, Mark?
They're from North Carolina.
South Carolina, yeah, that's just great, I agree. Do you have anything else, and you'd like to?
Yeah, just a couple things. The Mount Batty Tower has been added to the National Register of Historic Places, and that has been a lot of work from, especially Pat Scaling on the Historic Resources Committee did a lot of work for that, so that's exciting. I have continued to work on digitizing town records. We've made it through six years of town reports, and 25 years of select board minutes, and probably about 1,500 pages right now. And now gotten to the point where we're enlisting a few volunteers for that process. We need people to do everything from, or just take sheets out of protective sleeves to help unbind some of the old town reports so that they can be scanned through the Towns' machine. But if anybody is interested in that, or just would like me to send them a link to the things that have already been digitized, so you can provide feedback, or just have access to that, and feel free to do that. I attended a meeting in, at the Lincolnville Public Library about the topic of food sovereignty, which was really well-attended and very interesting. There's a video actually up on Josh Garretson's YouTube page for anybody that wants to look at that. It's gonna become a topic in Camden, this food sovereignty ordinance, which we've talked about a little bit already. And then the Waste Watch Committee of Midcoast Solid Waste, which is sort of the citizens' committee tasked with recycling outreach, is, we're trying to get feedback from people on the composting program, or the food waste collection program that's going on at the transfer station. We're a couple months in on that, and it looks, it seems to be well-received, but I'd love to hear from residents on, you know, what that experience has been, and so that we can report back to the Midcoast Solid Waste Board. And that's it for me.
Great. I'll read it right with John already mentioned, and that is the Charter Commission thing is, just to summarize everybody, we have designated, the select board gives to designate three people to that, and I believe the rest is six elected, is my numbers correctly in the Charter current right now, for a commission to review the Charter. We have had some applications for people on the Charter Commission, and we didn't bring it to the agenda because didn't want to get into, at this point, a pick and choose on the third person we appoint yet. But to encourage, it's a bit of a coin flip, but that's Coward's Way out. But the, more importantly, the Charter Commission is very important, and we need to step up to correct some of the things that have been in the document for a very long time and need to be looked at by a guest group of individuals. Yes, they have to be elected, which makes a slight amount of complication, but please, please consider being part of that commission and running for that in the June election. The only other thing I'll mention, just because we've asked, had a lot of questions, a couple of weeks, maybe a month ago, I guess, we voted to reconstitute the Harbor Committee. We have had an unbelievable number of applications for that committee. We can't get people to run for, or to volunteer for almost any committee, because it's work. It is, but we had 28 so far, and I'm expecting a few more to come in before we finish. But that's the very good news. I mean, it's nice to see so many people interested in doing something, whatever it is for the town. We hope to, I'm hoping to address that on the March 26th Select Board Agenda, so we don't go too long without our guest group of Harbor Committee. And that's about it for, I think, select board reports for all of us. We'll move on to the approval of board minutes for two meetings on February, both meetings in February, February 12, 2019, and February 26, 2019.
I have looked them over and seen no problems with either one. So unless there are any questions from anybody else, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for 212, 2019, and 226, 2019.
Second.
I can only vote on 212. I wasn't here on 226.
I'll just take one at a time, then. We'll take, we'll take 212 first.
Motion to accept the minutes for 212, 2019.
Second.
All's in favor?
Motion to accept the minutes for 226, 2019.
Second.
All's in favor? 3-0. Great. On the consent agenda tonight, we have three items, the renewal of lodging license for the Belmont Inn, and the renewal of the victual license for the Belmont Inn, and an approval of the application by the Camden Rotary Club to utilize the Village Green, and that is on July 4th this summer. Do I hear in disagreement or comment on the consent agenda? Not hearing any?
I, well...
Go ahead. Let me take one off? Again?
I just have a question.
It's simple, quick, go ahead, it's good.
Pretty simple, I think. Didn't, the Camden Rotary Club, didn't they have two different locations that they put in there? Was that a first preference and second preference? And Village Green was the first preference? Okay.
Rose, greens, that's clarification.
Yeah, they just wanna cover their bases.
I didn't see anything in there that was contrary to the...
I've done it before.
Mrs. Bach loved, he was like, so.
Do I hear any objections to the three items on the consent agenda? Not hearing, and those three items are hereby adopted. We're gonna go into a brief public hearing for three items, Camden Deli and Liquor License, Elms of Camden Bed and Breakfast Liquor License, and Briveto LLC Doing Business as Forty Paper Liquor License. The procedure for holding a public hearing is, the purpose of the hearing is for us to get input from the public so that we, the select board, are apprised of any issues that may be lurking. We ask any speaker from the public that wants to come to the podium to speak, we ask them to request and come to the podium, give their name and address, please, and to direct all comments to me, the chair. As a matter of courtesy, we don't want any verbal comments or applause in the audience on anybody's great speeches. After everybody's, everybody's finished speaking, I'll close the public portion and address the select board for their comments. The select board may, if it desires, call back any public person for, if they have any questions of that person. So with that said, is anybody, well, you have to take these one at a time, well, actually I don't. Does anybody want to speak for or against any of these three liquor licenses for the Camden Deli, Elms of Camden, or Forty Paper? Anybody from the public? For or against, or just wanna speak to how great a places they are? Not seeing any hands, then I will close the public hearing for those three licenses and revert to discussions of the select board.
No discussion.
Cool. Then I would, do I hear a motion to...
I make a motion that we approve the liquor licenses for the Camden Deli, the Elms of Camden, and Forty Paper.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? 4-0. With that, I will close the public hearing and revert back to the select board agenda for a presentation by Ransom Consulting on a general discussion of the status of the tannery cleanup study. Or...
No more studies.
No more studies.
Aaron, do you want me to arrow press for you?
No, I can do it. I wasn't sure the layout of the...
Let's get that thing down.
But I did bring you guys, if you don't want to...
Well, that's even better. That's even better, thanks so much. I can look at you, I'm looking at this.
Thank you very much.
And Stephen, I should have introduced you, but feel free to do so.
Okay, I will. My name is Steve Dyer. I'm a professional engineer with the firm Ransom Consulting. The name Ransom is the founder's last name, it's got nothing to do with what we do.
Oh, good.
We're environmental and civil engineers. We're in Portland, our office is in Portland. And so I'm just gonna spend just a, hopefully fairly brief amount of time, just bringing everybody up to speed as to where we are on the cleanup for the Apollo Tannery and what steps we still have in the future. So the slides, I have about five slides, but the first is, so what's going on so far at the site? Some of you guys may know exactly all of these items, others may not, so I'll just quickly run through them. Phase one and phase two environmental site assessments, that's a standard environmental investigation process. Those were completed by the DEP back in the early 2000s. That work led to a cleanup grant back in 2006 being awarded to Camden. But those first steps really focused on the industrial piece of the, of the site, so in the drawing, I also have a board right here, if you can't quite see it, but they really focused on this red area, which was where the real industrial work was completed on the site. We came in, in 2015, and did a new phase one environmental site assessment, and a new phase two environmental site assessment, using brownfield dollars through the Midcoast Economic Development District's brownfield grant. Our focus was on, did the cleanup that occurred way back in the 2000s, did it work? Did it do what it was supposed to do? Was the slurry wall holding the contamination in like it's supposed to? And then we looked outside of that red boundary and looked really at the full site. So we kinda took a little bit of a different approach, but we completed that work in 2015 and 2016. Through, after that work, we had some public meetings with the work group, the tannery work group, we had public meetings on our own. We started doing some preliminary remediation planning along with the DEP to really set the property up for getting a cleanup grant to, to deal with the low levels of contamination that were, were found at the site. And then we all worked together, we worked with the town to apply for a cleanup grant through the EPA. It's a very competitive application process, but the town was successful in it. We had a public meeting as part of that grant application, and then in April or May, Adra got the good news that Camden had been awarded the money, and the funds became available on October 1st, 2018. So that's sort of everything that's been completed in a very quick summary. And then what's, what else has happened? Part of the grant requires a community relations plan, and that's a, it's a document that just kind of explains how the community can be involved in the cleanup process. The grant requires an analysis of brownfield cleanup alternatives. We like to call that an ABCA, but if you say that in the Shaws or Hannaford, people don't know what that is, so it's an unwieldy name, really, analysis of brownfield cleanup alternatives. But we're working on that right now. It's literally about a week away from being completed and submitted. And so that's what's been going on so far. And the next slide, we'll talk about what, what still needs to be done, what's next. We'll be finalizing the ABCA. We'll be taking sort of input from the DEP, from the EPA. There's been some changes to the state regulations on cleanup, working all of that into this analysis. This document, the ABCA, is really, it's a very defined report that the EPA requires that evaluates the cleanup from a number of perspectives, cost, feasibility, reduction in toxicity, and it's basically, it's this analysis to make sure the cleanup does what you think it's gonna do, and it's doing it cost-effectively. After that, we will have the public meeting that is being sort of presented in the community relations plan, and there'll be a 30-day public comment period on the proposed cleanup. It's basically during that 30-day public comment period, if you have a question about what the remedial action is, we can answer it, we can further explain those, but it is a comment period on the, on the proposed remediation. There's a redevelopment RFP, and this is sort of chronological, but some of these steps over, overlap. So the town and Jeremy are pulling together an RFP to potentially redevelop the site or a portion of the site. And then we will prepare a remedial action plan, and so what we do is we take the remediation that was determined to be the best remediation in the ABCA, and we kind of flush it out and, and connect the dots and, and, and figure out the exact mechanism of the cleanup. Will involve the developer in that, and the reason for that is, we don't wanna put a engineered cover system for landscaping where they're gonna put a parking lot, or we don't wanna put a parking lot where they may put a, you know, landscaping or, or whatever. So we'll, you know, generally the cleanup, the, how the cleanup is defined will stay, but it will be sort of the boundaries of the different cover systems and whatnot that may change during that process. We'll be submitting the entire site to the main DEP VRAP program. The VRAP is the voluntary remedial action plan program, and to get their sign-off on everything that's done. And then we will develop bidding documents. The cleanup is required to be a publicly bid project, and so we'll prepare bidding documents, solicit bids from contractors, hopefully local contractors will be interested in that, and then we'll remediate the site. It should be about a two-to-three-week cleanup of the property, once we've gone through all those other hurdles. The cleanup part's pretty easy and pretty quick, I think. And then we'll get site closure, and we'll get a certificate of completion from the DEP that sort of closes the book on the site. And then at that point, the site, or a piece of the site, or a portion of the site can be transferred to a, or, to a developer, or pretty much the town can kind of do what they wanna do with that, whatever you guys, as a community, decide you wanna do, it should be good to go at that point. This is possible remediation, I, maybe I should have titled this slide likely remediation. We've had, like I said, a lot of preliminary ABCs prepared. Basically, the cleanup of the site is gonna be an engineered cover system to prevent contact with the soils. It will vary depending on what is gonna go above that cover system, if it's a building, if it's landscaped areas, if it's parking, it's, it changes a little bit, but it's, it's pretty standard, the, as to what will be done there. There may be some slab removal, or some targeted soil removal under the slab, depending on, again, what, what the town deems they wanna do in terms of redeveloping the site. The next three bullets are all conditions that already apply to the small piece that was already in the VRAP program, so I'm sure that those three things will carry into the full site, and that's the groundwater extraction restrictions, a vapor mitigation system if a structure is constructed, and then restrictions on excavating without any proper oversight. My next two slides are just quick examples of what I think the possible or likely remediation is gonna be, and I just throw them up there just because engineered cover system doesn't necessarily draw an image into someone's head. This is a site we worked on, the TW Dick Site in Gardner, Maine. It is a kind of, it's, it's actually right on the Cabessy Stream, and there were sort of two different portions of the site. The top two slides are the engineered cover system. The orange that you see there is a barrier layer that's being installed as part of the cover system, and then that piece became recreational, just open airspace. The bottom is where there was a building that was removed, and then the engineered cover system ends up being the parking, and actually the building is part of the cover system, and the rain garden that's around the sign. So there's a pretty wide variety of what this engineered cover system can be, and the bright photos are, are some of them there. And then this is another site we worked on, the Maine Leather Site. This was a tannery, like the Apollo Tannery in Dover Foxcroft, and that's likewise right on a river. It seems like folks like to locate the tanneries on the rivers for some reason. And that was one that, this is where the, this was a landscaped cover system, and that's the installation of it, and then sort of the, the final product on the right side, and, and that's really another example of what, what is likely to occur at the Apollo Tannery. And that's really all I have. Do you have any questions for the select board?
Well, we can do that, or we hear Jeremy first?
Or Jeremy, to talk about the RFP?
Yeah, well, do you want to have a question, or Stephen?
No. But I'll, I'll go with any format.
Okay, well, let's, let's, um, Jeremy, talk a little bit about this, where we are, the overall schedule, and including what Ransom has done to Dayton.
Yes, so there is a slight change from what most people have heard up until this point. As people probably are aware, the farmer's market was, we were looking for another alternative site for the summer. There's been a change in this plan in talking with Steve and Alan Peterson at USCPA to better position the town for redevelopment of the site. The plan has now been modified, so that we're gonna put out an RFP likely within the next month or so, and then we'll review that. And as everyone knows, or should know, it does have to go to town vote, so hopefully we get some good proposals in, and that the community can get behind, and then we'll take it to town vote, and then the proposed developer will work with Ransom, as Steve said, to design their cover plan to, again, better utilize federal dollars and the developers' dollars to redevelop the site. So therefore, the farmer's market, which was gonna go to the Mill Parking Lot this summer, is actually gonna be returned to the tannery site this summer, so they'll be there. And in speaking with the farmer's market folks, I will say that I think they're happy that they're going back there, and what they were concerned about was people would, may not have known that they were gonna be moving to the Knox Mill Site, and so this will at least give them an opportunity to let their customers know that they're gonna be going somewhere else next year, and their plan will be to, I think, put out some sort of survey with their customers on where they would like to see an alternative site in Towne Bee for the next year, so I think it is a win-win at the present time. So that's where we are. And when I say RFP, as you know, it was on the work, work plan of CDAC, so I am working with CDAC to develop an RFP, and we will be presenting that to the select board for your okay and your comments, because I think it is critical that you guys have a, a say in what that RFP lays out. And again, that would, will go out hopefully within the month and a half, or at least you'll hear about, you'll hear, see a draft of it within the month, is my hope. you'll hear about, you'll hear, see a draft of it within the month, is my hope.
Okay, now we'll open up the questions. You want to go first?
Yeah, I have, so, I have maybe different questions for Jeremy, but in terms of just the site and what is in the possible scope of what we could do and what the cleanup could entail, I guess I'm a little bit confused about which part of the site could be addressed. Is it just, any of this money can only be used to clean up the stuff in the red area? Is that the way it?
No, it's actually, so the dollars are used to clean up any, any area of the site that has documented contaminants above cleanup standards. So when we sampled the site as part of our Phase One and our Phase Two, we found areas that had exceedances. And so the money is really to clean up those areas.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not within the red area. They're, just on this figure, it's mostly in this area, and then kind of coming down. So it takes a little bit of the red area.
Okay.
But that's really, you know, if I had to say, it would be sort of this, you know, this northwest.
So could you, I've gotten very conflicting reports about the extent to which the riverbank area was tested. And, I mean, I think you've seen part of that. We were standing there that day, and Nick from the DEP said, oh, well, we were really, you know, we were really focused on the rest of the site, so we never actually evaluated this here. And to me, that is, you know, right along the riverbank, where you see the massive tank that's built into the, I mean, there's massive amounts of wool that's dyed red, there's, I mean, so much stuff there that I can't believe that none of that would come up as exceeding the.
Yeah, the original Phase Two investigation that the state did, they, and Nick Hodgkins was the lead on that, that's who you're referring to, right, Nick Hodgkins. They actually collected dozens of samples of the sediment within the river, and collected, and, I mean, they did a pretty extensive look at it. Our Phase Two, we did what's called pour-water samples, which is, we're grabbing a water sample at the interface where groundwater becomes surface water, so you're kind of looking at that. And you're looking, if there was contamination, that's the most likely place that it would be. And our pour-water samples didn't show any contamination. So I think the DEP's data, which was really extensive, there's a lot of solid waste in there, and that's something that the Brownfield Program isn't allowed to clean up. They're allowed to clean up contaminants. And so that's the, that's the big, that's the tough thing there.
There's a storage tank there. I mean, there's leather hides that are, and so this is the first time that I've heard, because Nick, when he was standing there with me, said that they hadn't looked at that part, but that if it were, if there, if there were contamination, then surely they would be able to see it in the water samples. But I guess the main thing for me is-
They did sediment samples, too. They did water and sediment, but-
How can we assure that, it feels like it's going to be a big embarrassment for the town, for the EPA, for everybody, to, at the end of this process, to still have a riverbank that is probably not safe to let your dog off the leash?
I mean, I, I wasn't part of that discussion, but I've had dozens of discussions with Nick Hodgkins on the site, and he's never once indicated that he, to me, anyway, that he didn't feel their sampling of the river was not comprehensive. So that's the first that I've ever heard that, and I'd, I don't, I don't, I'd love to have been part of that conversation, because it's a very different discussion that he gives to me. But his thing, it's, I'm not disagreeing with you that there is a, you know, steel and hides and things like that, but if they don't have contaminants, the Brownfield Program is not the one that is allowed to clean them up.
I want to address it.
So there's other programs that may be out there. There's, you know, the state of Maine gets money from FEMA, and they do the whole Coastal Communities Grant Program that, you know, there's other programs that maybe you could tap into to clean up solid waste and make it more accessible.
I'd like to be able to tell volunteer, at least, that it would be safe to grab that stuff. Is there, I've never been able to get sample, actual data.
I can send you the reports.
That'd be great.
And, I mean, they're, they're in the state files, they're very downloadable for the public, actually. Like, if you searched Apollo Tannery on the DEP website, you could find the reports. But I can, if you give me your email, I can-
Okay, no, if it's on there, I can find it, it just-
Send you copies of them.
And also, I'll reach out to Nick as well and have a conversation.
I mean, I think you were there on that day, weren't you there with Pat Finnegan? And when we were standing right there, and it was like, this stuff right here, has this been evaluated? And the answer, the answer was no. And Nick was there, too.
Yeah, I, I'm, maybe-
But we don't need to get into it right now, I just-
He was responding to something that's different. I mean, I've been very, I mean, I remember going to the meetings where he-
It's just, I really want to be able to clean up that part of it, because I think we have an obligation, and there's certain parts of it that are going to, are continuing to be eroded into the Riverwalk. It's going to be, before we, now that the Riverwalk's going to be, and how can we-
The other grants that I'm referring to, the DEP has, they're not DEP grants, they're other groups of the state.
General Cleanup Grants?
Well, the cleanup grants that we have is through the EPA, but, like, the Riverwalk and the, you know, and they have a grant for making waterways and things like that more accessible for the public and things. I'm sure that there's, you know, other avenues, it's just not, there's just no data to support what you're saying. And I'm, and again, I have had so many discussions with Nick on this, and he's usually the one that's saying, there's really nothing that needs to be done here.
Right, I've seen that.
And I'm the one, well, you have an exceedance.
He always says that, he says it's nothing.
So it's very different for you to say that, just really surprises me.
No, he didn't think there was anything that needed to be done. He didn't think it was a big deal, that, I'm not saying that, it was just, but it's just clearly a public safety hazard, if nothing else, so.
Like, from, you're saying, from sharp-
Shards of metal, shards of metal.
I just feel like surely, if we were to test in some of these places, we should be able to get a high sample, and that would allow us to be able to use some of the money for this, because it's going to, it's hard to imagine money become, you know, that much money becoming available. And I worry the town's going to get stuck with it later on, and that we're going to wish that we had, you know, used the opportunity now, but.
Well, let's get a hold of the reports, God, it's a good idea.
Well, I'll follow up with Nick Hodgkins on it, and I have ideas on how we may be able to deal with some of the solid waste.
Yeah, I would think there are other ways of handling it.
Done, just, I'd love.
Yours is covered, Mark?
Fine.
Fine? I, one second, yeah. Fine, but we should get a hold of that data, because I'd be curious where those samples were taken, and at least we have that record, I think it's good to have. And what was tested for, which I'm sure is pretty broad. I always tend to have questions about the study, or any questions about what Steve presented as far as where we are on schedule from the public. Tom, you want to start? You'd have to stand, unfortunately, this is the microphone, Tom, so.
Tom Resick, 67, Rosson. Jeremy was talking, or both of you were talking about leveraging the cleanup in regards to So development can mean the whole, the whole site with anything we're going to do, I take it. The unknown part is a building or something like that, which I understand the purpose of that. But it would be nice to hear more about leveraging the remediation for the parts we know about, which are the park, the open space, playground, and because we could use those funds for that part of it. So maybe it's just a lack of clarification when you say redevelopment, what you're going to be leveraging. Is it just a commercial building? Or would you be using the funds leveraged to help build a playground, improve the green space, maybe build some other trails? That'd be my question. And I think it's just a lack of clarity.
Oh, that there's going to be a playground, I don't, do we, or we don't know where it would be, or-
I think a lot of those questions are a little premature. I don't think there's enough known on it yet. I mean, from my perspective, we need to throw out a broad net and try to get every option, every possible scenario proposed for that site. Whether it be, and, you know, the area's going to be capped and cleaned up, so whether it's green space, or a building, or a parking lot, or an area for the farmer's market, all of that stuff will be part of the cleanup. And so when we're leveraging, you know, the federal dollars, and the developer comes in and say he wants to, would like, like I think Steve was speaking to, a parking lot here, or landscaping there, we can use some of the federal dollars to help fund, right, that parking lot and that landscape, those landscaped areas.
How about a playground?
Again, I don't know where the town is fully on the playground, and I think we need to-
But I would say we can't use cleanup dollars to, like, do anything.
To build a playground, as well.
Buy playground equipment.
Correct, we can't, correct.
But the site, I suppose, is fine.
Well, again, I think we have to be wide in our net on what we're, what we're trying to expect from a development. I mean, I will say, I'm talking a little bit later with Lehman Scott about CDAC and what we're, what we're doing, or what CDAC's looking at. Part of that is, the town has, I forget the number, 700, almost 700 acres of land the town owns.
Right.
And I just bring that up, because when you look at it, we have, we have about 600, I don't remember the numbers exactly, 600 acres of park, green space, open space, recreational areas in town of our, like, 700 acres of land that the town owns. And then we have 70 acres or so in cemeteries. And then we have about 30 acres in public works, fire, this building. And then we have 77 acres in Sagamore, and then we have three acres in the tannery site. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Right.
So, you know, I think we need to keep this net wide and open for developers. We may find a developer that comes in and says, you know, I love the idea of mixed use, I love the idea of the farmer's market, I love the idea of a park, I love it all. And they may be willing to invest in this town and do that. And I think that's what we need to be open to and put out there for developers, and not be narrowly focused and closed on it, because then what we're going to get is, we may not get anything. And I think we need to have this open, an open book, and see what we get, knowing that we have to clean the site up, and knowing that, too, we have to go through a town process to sell the property, so, or dispose of the property and redevelop it. So, I mean, there's a lot of checks and balances here that are built into this process already. So I think we should be assured, and I think town people should be assured that it'll be a good plan moving forward.
I'm just very confused, because there was just a recent article in the newspaper that Jeremy responded to, and they interviewed me and a few other people. And the gist of the article was, this is going to be a multi-use site, not maybe it's going to be a multi-use site. And Jeremy's comments in that article-
Tom, I'm going to stop you. We're not going to talk about tonight about the uses of the site. We brought Ransom in to talk about the status of the cleanup grant and where that's going. That's the purpose of tonight.
We're talking about the RFP as well.
We're talking, no. What we're talking about is, Ransom was here to talk about the cleanup and where we are in the cleanup study and where we're going. There is going to be an RFP, you're absolutely correct. And it was mentioned, and also what was mentioned was the conundrum we got into with when the farmer's market, you know, goes, what summer is going to impact it, because you get a chicken and egg thing going on. But we're not debating here whether it's going to be mixed use or not. We're not going down that hole tonight, please.
Nothing we're going to be mixed use, we just don't know everything.
Yeah, mixed, yeah, mixed, we have the pieces and parts go, we'll get there, Tom, just, you've got to take a breath.
Well, just the way Jeremy's talking about possibly selling the whole property, I think that's what we need clarity on.
Tom, you're jumping way, way ahead.
That's a simple question. Are we looking to sell the whole property?
Thank you, we're not anywhere near selling anything at this moment in time. We're not, we don't have anything out, the RFP hasn't been drafted yet, you haven't seen anything yet, we're not going to, we're discussing the cleanup and the status of the cleanup tonight, and where we are with applying the grant.
So there is a possibility the whole property could be sold to a developer.
That could mean that, it can go with all kinds of conditions. And so the ideal scenario is that somebody submits a proposal that includes these things, and then it gets passed on in the deed, that the playground that is part of their development is, you know, has, there's public access to it. I mean, hopefully, we can marry all of these things.
I think that's exactly right. We control the property, and we have the ability to, we can approve whatever happens there.
I can say that would be my goal if I-
Yeah. John, you had your hand up?
Yes.
Yeah, it makes two of us.
I just have some questions, and I'm not going to get into the other stuff. Is this, some of this stuff based off the Summit Report, the original report, done back in, what, 2002, '04?
Two, true.
The Summit Report was what was focused on this heavily industrial area, when the previous cleanup grant was used to clean up this piece that's within this red-
Right, but they had identified, this area here was petroleum at that time, it was all contaminated with petroleum. This area was statted solvents. This here, there used to be the old woolen mill, back before it was a tannery, there was a building that sat here, and this is where the heavy, the heaviest of the materials are. And of course, they put the, I think they put a-
Slurry wall.
-slurry wall or a coffe dam in to try to keep it from going into the river.
Yep.
And the intent was, when that was done, is hopeful if there's any development, that this would be capped with asphalt or some kind of a barrier, so to keep it sealed in that one spot.
Yeah, it has a cap, a cover system on it right now.
Right. But also, we never did any, a boring out of the slab.
We did.
You did?
Yeah.
So did you find anything?
Yep, just in one location, we did-
Because it used, there's a trench system that goes all the way through here, but that's the reason why this is on a river, because the water used to run right-
This red line right here.
Right.
There you go.
So, what are you, what are you looking for up here? Because you didn't say petroleum, so I was curious what's up there.
We sampled for petroleum all over the site.
Because this, there was a, right here, there was a gas station sat right here, the Millville Store, and it was Fountain's Market, and then the gas leaked down out of the tanks, and of course, it leaked down here.
Yep.
I'm just curious to know.
We looked into all of that, that's three years ago. Again, we sampled all over the site, superficial samples, wells, pour water, soil borings, and we compare it to, the state has standards, and if something exceeds the standard, then it's something that, this cleanup grant, we went after to help pay for that. There were no petroleum compounds anywhere on the site that we, and we sampled the whole site, that were detected above the standards.
Okay, and so are these still here, the statted solvents still in this area, is there a report?
The statted solvents, see this yellow dotted line?
Yep.
That's the slurry wall.
Okay, so they're all here now.
That's capturing, and because it's a cover system, we didn't sample within the cover system, because we don't want to penetrate the clay and let the stuff out. So we sampled along the edge, and no statted sol, statted solvents were found anywhere along the edge, and this would flow to the river.
Okay, and what about, there were chromiums that were right in here.
Mm-hmm, we sampled for chromium.
Did you find any there?
That was cleaned up by the Summit Group, yeah.
Okay, and the other thing is, I recall-
But we resampled to confirm that they actually did a good job.
But I also recall there was a report, I wish I remember how many years ago, I want to say about four or five, that DEP had put like a grading system of what they would allow in there as far as whether it was a park or industrial, is that still?
These are the regs, I think that's- Yep. So the cleanup standards have- So the cleanup standards have, there's a residential, there's a park user, there's a commercial.
They were recommending at the time more commercial because of the less use on the, you know, you're not standing on the ground all the time. And they were also saying a passive ventilation system at that time was acceptable.
Which is what we said, yeah. And we compared it to all the standards, residential, park user, and the commercial so that you could see what the ramifications would be if you put all houses here, if you kept it park, or if you returned it to its commercial roots or industrial roots. So it was all evaluated as part of this.
Okay, well, thank you.
And there are new, new guidelines, correct?
Yeah. In this past year in 2018.
So is that in the VRAP program or is that just statewide?
It's statewide. It's independent of the VRAP.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. No, thank you, John. Again, I want to accept a more public comment on the cleanup activity only. Please, Nina? Sure.
I'm Nina Holland at 107 Washington Street in Camden. And I'm only just going to read from the very first page of the proposal to EPA. And there's dot, dot, dots, I'm taking phrases out. It will create new recreational space to help attract younger families to move and stay in Camden. The market area will provide a flat, obstacle-free play space. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Yeah, anybody else? Mr. Gold?
This will be very brief, and I apologize if it's repetitious because you changed the timing on your agenda.
I changed what?
I tried to get here without listening to certain stuff. My question is, it's been a discussion-
I'll try to get better.
About leverage. My, in combination with an RFP, my question is, eventually we're going to have this RFP, somebody may come in and do something, and the area in which they do it may be, say, involve what might have been, if it was a $200,000 cleanup, that area might have been $50,000 worth of cleanup. Question is, does the developer pay for that and we get the money? Or do we have to give the money back to DEP or whoever gave us the grant? Steve? Developer saves us some outlay. Where's it go?
Good question. Thanks, Steve.
There's a question.
We got the answer? Oh, now you're getting greedy.
So on the leveraging in, the, first off, the cleanup grant can only be used for cleaning up. There's a whole bible of cleanup grants that the EPA has pulled together that defines what can be paid for and what can't be paid for. And so the cleanup grant can pay for cleanup. It can't pay for, as Audra mentioned, it can't pay for a playground. But if you're putting a cover system down that is intended for landscaped areas, it's very different than a cover system that's intended for a parking lot or for a building or for a playground. And so we have the flexibility to put the proper cover system down depending on how that property will be used. So as an engineer, I want to do things as cost effectively as possible. So I wouldn't want to put a cover system down for a playground and then have it have to be torn up by a future developer and now put a cover system down. He'll have the same requirements of a cover system for a building. And in, and in another area where we put a cover system down thinking there's, hey, this is a good spot for a parking lot, you don't want to put a good cover system down that is, now the developer needs to tear it down, you know, tear it up and rebuild it because that's just really a waste of money. So for the benefit of the developer, which is really your question, if we put a good cover system down for a parking area and that makes sense, you know, and we do it in concert with him, he maybe does not need to bring in two feet of structural fill for a parking lot and all of that. So it does save him some money. It doesn't really cost Camden any more money because they're putting a cover system down that makes sense in that area, makes the property more attractive and all of that. But you as a community, as part of your RFP, can solicit things from him. He may be more willing to, I don't know, increase-
Pay more.
Well, pay more. That's a great one. Maybe he's willing to have a little bit bigger playground than he was anticipating. Maybe he's willing to put a sidewalk in this area to allow, you know, there's things that you guys can solicit for giving him a, a cover system that makes sense for his development. And that's what, you know, in-
I think a TW Dick site might be-
The TW Dick is, I don't know how to back up. Is, that's exactly what occurred there where Gardner was able to get more concessions from the developer because the cleanup made sense with the proposed redevelopment. And that's really what, you know, when Jeremy's talking about leveraging and stuff, it's, it's, it's not like this hard dollar of the grant going to the developer and the developer transferring money back. It's just working together as a, as a team, the community, the developer, everybody, to make sure the site gets cleaned up correctly, which is the EPA's goal, and it gets redeveloped how the community wants it.
Thank you, Steve. Was there any other questions? I didn't see any other hands. And with that, I will say thank you very much, Steve, for coming and helping us to know where we are. And Jeremy, your addition too. I don't know if you have any other questions, we'll move on on the agenda.
Did you have another question?
I guess I have a little maybe a comment.
Go ahead.
That I think, I mean, I get why we're trying to, or maybe it's that I don't understand why we would be limiting discussion right now to just the cleanup and not the RFP process or what's being considered and what's not being considered. I just, I feel like it's helpful if we just say what, I mean, not that anybody or even all of us collectively can guarantee any outcome right now, but we can at least say this is the range of things that we think, you know, this is what we think has been agreed to up to this point. This is what's non-negotiable. I feel like it would be helpful to everybody if we would talk about that as, as a group for just a few minutes.
Jeremy, you want to talk to the status of that? It's perfectly fine.
Some of it comes down to us and what-
Well, I, I think it's very difficult from my perspective to look at the possible uses out there and make a list if that's what you're asking for.
But we have, so we've collected massive amounts, or the way I see it, massive amounts of public input. We kind of know from, we have those seven guiding principles or however many there were. I was just searching for them on-
In 2008.
-to find them. So we should, and I, since those were approved by voters, we probably need to-
And they're carried forward every year?
Do something like, so there's that. And then we have the most recent tannery work group, which kind of gave like, I would say, the, the dream scenario in a lot of ways. And the hope is now that we could find a way, there was no financing mechanism that went along with that, but we have a lot that's going to go out to developers as, to indicate the types of things that Camden residents would be likely to approve. So the way I see it is that our job now as a select board is to make sure that an RFP goes out that's, I think it should be quite broad. I think it should allow developers to submit multiple proposals. And so we can actually see, because what we don't know yet is whether there is a developer out there willing to finance some kind of a project that will give us the things that we want, like the ability to have the tannery, the tannery, the farmer's market and, and a, and a playground ideally. Maybe, you know, maybe there's some business vision that would support all of that. Or maybe we're going to find out that we don't get any of that back, and the developer's going to say, well, if you want me to do this with your playground and your farmer's market thing, then I can't offer, I can offer zero for the property, but I'll do it for free if you, or you would have to pay me this amount. I think we owe it at this point to, to Camden residents to get the broadest possible scope of what's out there. And then we'll know as a select board with lots of input which of those proposals, or maybe none of them, would make the most sense to go to voters. So the fact that we would be keeping it broad right now and saying, well, we really don't know, to me isn't saying, well, that's because we're all totally open to having Walmart there and no playground. It's not to say that it's all, at all. It's to say that maybe there's a vision out there that we haven't thought of.
It's pretty much guaranteed.
And we should give all the information possible to the developers so that they know what, what we've found that Camden residents would be most likely to approve. But I just, I don't want people to think that we're like, we're scheming something because we're not.
No, that's a good question. Let, let Jeremy address that.
I think that's exactly right.
Let, let Jeremy address that.
I think that's exactly right. I mean, we may find someone, I don't even necessarily think that we should limit it to the current zoning requirements.
No, that was, it's owned to be a tannery.
Right. I mean, we may find, we don't allow single-family homes in that zone. We just don't.
Right.
We may find, who knows? A developer may come in and say, you know what, I'd like to do five house lots. And then the back part of the property may be a parking lot and the farmer's market and a playground. And the town, people might love that idea. I mean, you never know.
It was considered that.
So I think you've got to leave this wide open.
Yeah.
My plan has always been to include the tannery work group recommendations, to include the principles, you know, the, these guiding principles and throw out, and the zoning requirements, as well as leave it open to say, I think we ought to-
Yeah, the creativity will come from the outside, not from the end.
You've got to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, we've got to get something-
I agree.
Happen to that property. I firmly believe that. And I think everyone, it's possible to get everything everyone wants.
It's been, my understanding, the RFP that's being drafted, put together, is a broad spectrum kind of a nonspecific RFP. We're not specifically looking for a house developer or a specific kind of a use.
I think we want a creative partner is what we want.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, developer looks at things totally differently than we might. And provides them ideas that, I bet there's a couple that are going to be, wow, I'd never thought about that, you know, kind of a thing.
And I'm hoping so.
I hope so too. I hope so does, that's always the best-
And the timing, everything could work great. I mean, the RFP goes out, you know, in the next two months, say.
Right.
And then, you know, we got to get this to a town meeting so we could get community buy-in on this over the summer, and we could take it to town vote in November. And if the community buy-in is for something that doesn't, isn't currently allowed, we could have zoning ordinances amendment that go right along with it to support this, you know, redevelopment. And everything gets approved, everyone's happy and, you know-
Well, this all brings us back to the, what you talked about is why there's been this change, as I understand it, in the farmer's market, not going to Knox Mill this summer, but perhaps next summer. But that's because this process has to go through and, and coordinate with the cleanup.
If it's really only going to take, do I hear it was going to only take two to three weeks to do the cleanup?
The process will take probably five to six months, but the actual construction site is probably about three, two to three weeks, depending on how many crews they have there.
How many machines?
So it's possible that, that farmer's market could be there or, because two to three weeks doesn't sound, or do they do lots of staging ahead of time or, I mean-
They start to load equipment onto the site and then, it's a process.
And remember, we're starting with November and then winter construction. If you're thinking about that road to have them back there the following year, meaning next year, they'd be doing winter construction, although-
At the end of the day, it's all down to timing and when we're able to sort of, you know, do everything that we need to do to plan for the site and then determine exactly what we're going to do with it, and then the timing around when it can be done, so.
If we don't, if we can get the farmer's market back there again next, great, but let's take one step at a time. We have to take one summer at a time and see how this timing works.
Closeout of the grant is September, end of September 2021.
Okay, so we have, we have two and a half years. Okay, cool.
Could we ever put two proposals? I'm not saying we want to do this, but is it, would it be feasible or allowed to put two proposals out to voters and let them? No. No, say we get, say we get a bunch of them and nobody can agree, and then it comes down to the select board to decide? That's my only concern. Say we get a couple feasible things and the select board has to decide which one to put out to voters.
To warrant, yeah.
And then it's going to-
Gated issue. I mean, right now, again, it's town vote and it's guiding principles and the town vote.
Right, right, right.
So, you know, that, those things may have to be tweaked. And that's not a bad thing if it's, if we find the, the right developer.
I think that can be addressed downstream.
Okay.
Agreed.
Again, thank you very, very much and all the public too. Long way to go, but most important message was where it's at in terms of the, the grant and also the kind of conundrum we walked into with the farmer's market coming back again this summer.
I'm sorry about that, but I think it just makes sense.
Thank you.
Were they, they weren't annoyed by the-
No. It may be the person I've been talking to, but no.
With that, it's probably an excellent segue into what's related, really. It was a discussion by, and thank you again, Steve, for coming up from your Southland about SEDAC and its, and its breadth of scope. Because we'd like to always bring in committees to talk about what they're working on, where they're going, and the work plan kind of thing. So this is part of that also.
Yep, I think that's very important. And I'd have Lehman Scott come up, he's the chair.
Perfect.
And I think he'll give a little summary of where we are now. And it's kind of brief, but just, we're here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. I, I think we've covered a couple of the things that we talked-
Are you using this or?
That's ours.
So- He might want to take it.
That's ours.
That's ours.
Okay, I'm just going to switch out the input series.
And we've covered, I guess, a couple of things we were planning on discussing tonight with the SEDAC. One of them is the RFP for the tannery, and we've got a subcommittee that's working with Jeremy to put that together. They've had one meeting, and I think they'll be coming back to the, to us as a group to have conversations about that. And then ultimately, we will be back to you with those, with the RFP for your input and approval on that. So that's one of the things we're working on. And as, as been discussed here, the tannery work group recommendations will be included in that as well as some of the other things that we have been saying we won't like green space, like farmer's market. A lot of that will be addressed as, as items that are important to the, to the RFP.
Just a minute, Lehman, please.
I'm sorry.
No, thank, okay. Please, go ahead. No, that's, that's a question. That's okay, go ahead.
I'm not, I don't need to go ahead.
Okay, I thought there was a question about using a machine later, that's fine.
No, I answered them.
Oh, good, good. I'm sorry, Lehman, sorry, Jeremy. Go ahead.
So the, that'll be something we'll be back to you in the future, and we're working on that as well. We talked about the, the town-owned property and Jeremy went over that, the acreage and that sort of thing. We have just finished that assessment working with, I say we have, the assessor and Jeremy have, for the SEDAC to, to kind of take a little, what the town actually owns and has control of. One obviously is the tannery site, another big chunk is the, is the Sagamore Farms. And we're looking at that basically with the idea of, you know, the question of what's the highest and best use of town-owned property, be it big chunks, little chunks, even individual lots the town may own. even individual lots the town may own. As far as highest, best use of any limitations on what could be put on that property and also is there a possibility for development or increase in privately-owned property there with tax-based community economic development? You know, what, what are the best uses for property? And so that's something that we're looking at as well through the, through the SEDAC. And one, obviously, is the, is the tannery. The other one is Sagamore Farms. Uh, I think maybe there's an RFP that's going to be involved in that as well. On that property, we won't, hopefully, SEDAC will have some involvement and input into that as well. And again, thinking again, what's the highest and best use for that piece of property? Obviously, currently, we're using that as a small solar farm installation and also some trails. And I guess the question then is what else makes sense on that piece of property? What are, what are the options for the town to, you know, have its best use of that property as well? And what, and what do we need? What does Camden need that that piece of property may offer? We're also working to a lesser extent, but still on our agenda and our plate, so to speak, the idea of broadband. We talked to you about that a couple of, two or three months ago, of SEDAC having an interest in that and working together with, having discussions, looking at the possibility of either doing something on a regional approach where we join with other jurisdictions to try to expand those opportunities on, in our area or maybe even incentivizing existing providers in some way so they will expand and give us better broadband access in our area. And then another, I guess, the fourth item we're working on is, is affordably priced housing. We keep hearing repeatedly that here in Camden, we have a, a, a lack of affordable housing for people who want to work and live in Camden year-round, full-time. Uh, and, and there are several, it's kind of a, it is a challenge. Uh, there are several things that contribute to that, probably including part-time residents and maybe short-term rentals, but it's a big issue here. And it's something we want to take a look at on that. How do we attract young families? How do we attract year-round residents who want to live in this? We have an incredible quality of life. There are a lot of reasons that people want to come here. And out of that town-owned property assessment, we are hoping we can identify some options for that, for even if it's single lots or, or other things that is, is buildable residential lots or some sort of affordably priced housing. That is something we haven't done a whole lot on. We've had a couple of conversations. Jeremy has provided us with some good examples of, of, one of them is the North Haven Sustainable Housing Group that's working on some options there. Another one is on MDI. There is a housing trust on Mount Zert Island that's also got some innovative ideas on how to address housing in that community. And so we're going to pull from that and try to have some conversation and come back with some ideas on that. That's kind of what we've been up to and what's on our agenda. There'll be other issues, I think. We've got a, we had a good meeting a couple of weeks ago, a, a good core group of members that are involved and, and having good conversations. And we'd like to come back occasionally from time to time to have conversations with you and report as to our progress and hopefully bring you things for consideration like tannery and Sagamore Farms.
Thanks, Lehman. Sure. Any questions? Oh, Allison, there's a question.
Or maybe a comment. I, the affordable housing thing is something that I think is just so important for Camden and it's one of the things that I've talked about a lot, but there, there are so many things for the town to work on that it's very hard, you know, staff time can only be dedicated to so much stuff at once. And it does seem like it's been a while since there was a good look at how we might be able to increase that. So I feel like with the short-term rental stuff, that has been looked at quite a bit. So I would hope that SEDAC would, I would, I would think sort of what SEDAC could bring would be maybe some of the other options for, for affordable housing and also looking at, you know, zoning and lot sizes and are there requirements that we could change so that existing parcels and buildings could be broken up and better utilized? And so I thank you for looking at that.
I think in the past, there was maybe a work group for that.
We had the Camden area, you know, affordable housing and they, I mean, they did a, a lot.
It's been a while.
It would be great if somebody, maybe even that was involved in that before, could help to pass on that institutional knowledge.
They're available, they're still here.
Right, so, um, I just, thank you for looking at that.
I think the reason we've mentioned the Island Housing Trust on MDI and North Haven Sustainable Housing is there are two real good models that are providing some solutions in, on MDI and on North Haven and I think we're going to look to those tomorrow. I mean, I think recreating the wheel, I mean, all of the mid-coast, all coastal Maine is dealing with this issue, so.
Belfast did a bunch of stuff, but I, and maybe it's been mixed results in terms of whether it's actually made it, had an impact, but.
I live in Belfast.
Right.
And nothing, it hasn't changed at all, um, the housing issues right now. I don't know why that is, but.
Maybe it hasn't gotten as worse as fast as it would have or.
I guess.
But I understand. I mean, I'm trying to look at all what's happening across the region.
Right.
You're right, I think looking at zoning.
Lot sizes.
And fill and density issues are critical to that. I mean, you also, people like kind of what they have in their neighborhood and you try to protect that as much as possible.
Sure.
While allowing some infill to happen.
The Rockland City Council did.
All right. Thank you, Lehman. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jeremy. Next item on the agenda is a, a discussion on live streaming committee meetings, a backdrop here and I'll let others take charge of it, which is basically to talk about our new system.
Yeah, so I think that even though we're still working out the new system, there's some of us who are more familiar with it than others. I'm not among one of those who is familiar with it. I do think that it was designed with a mind toward live streaming more committee meetings. There are some committees who've been pretty proactive about this. They would like their meetings to be livestreamed. There are some that haven't even thought about it and there are some that already do it, just as, you know, they always have, so they continue doing it. But I think given that we've got a system that's kind of designed for ease of use and something that I'm told is very, it's very easily trainable even for those who aren't, you know, familiar with AV systems. I think it's something that we might want to think about consistency across all of our committees, that if we have some doing it, we have all of, all of the committees doing it. Because, you know, there are people out there who like to keep track of what's going on. They can't always make it to every meeting, but they like to, you know, brush up on things or they'll hear about something and they want to go back and see what's going on. So I, I just think that, you know, it's something for consistency's sake that we should think about doing. And I really think that, um, you know, coming from the select board as sort of a general policy, that would be a good way to approach it.
I mean, I, I.
Go ahead.
Um, just a quick example, Pathways the other night, last week, met in, in this room. We also meet in Rockport. Um, and so there will be some, I mean, that when rooms are moved around, that may need to, if it's a policy, it may need to be a malleable one for when it's not possible. I mean, you know, we could use a phone or we could, but sometimes that's just not.
But Pathways is probably only multi-town.
No, but there are other instances where.
And upper rooms that people move.
Like Historic Resources today met, um, we all, in the library because the design committee was meeting in here. So I think at this point, it can't be a policy, but just a, you know, highly encouraged and see how that goes and, you know, trying to design it so that we're looking at that when possible and encourage committee chairs. Maybe we could send something to committee chairs, you know, encouraging them to reach out to get, you know, trained and.
Well, I think part of you're talking about maximum utilization of this room. This is where the IAV is at the moment, at least, and many of our committees do meet here. I don't think there's too many that don't, there's a few. And commissions also, by the way, I think it's both. We already have boards already being broadcast, so we've got that kind of covered. But I think, yeah, I think anyway, as a policy, it should be every time there's a meeting and this room is available, the meeting should be here and it should be livestreamed, as simple as that. Mark?
I was just going to say, we, we had, as Allison mentioned, the downtown design team had a meeting in this room at four o'clock today. And one of the discussions was they need to come before the select board more than they have been so that everybody knows what they're talking about, so everybody's aware of what's going on. And I think that's essential for everything. It's, it's, you can't build the process without people knowing what's happening. And I think that communication is real important. Allison has been, uh, been in, in charge of, you know, pushing this forward to, to have more transparency in all of our means, the select board workshops and all of that. And I think it's real important because the more people know what's going on, not only will they be better informed, but they also might be better prepared to want to volunteer and contribute as well. And I think that's, that's essential. So as much as we can do, we should, especially with the technology. And maybe one of the things we do is, when we have another budget, is see what it takes to add live streaming to the Tucker Room upstairs or the third floor.
Sure.
Um, you know, maybe that's something that's not so out of reach so that we have a couple rooms where we can do it.
Steve, you wanted to say something, please?
Quick comment.
Steve, you have to come out. I'm sorry, because of speakers and also because you want to hear your voice. In the interest of transparency and because I believe so much gets accomplished there, that select board working sessions be livestreamed.
Oh, we are so ahead of you. That was my first thing.
Just to that point, Steve, we just have one Monday. It was livestreamed.
We've, since this select board has been in effect the last two years.
We've publicized.
Uh, good point.
It's, no, they are publicized.
They're on the website.
They're on, they're on, subscribe to our YouTube channel, you can go on the, because that's the way it used to be. You would have these workshops would, would pop up and then that's when all the things would get decided. And it was like decided by consensus because you're not allowed to vote. And then sometimes in the meetings, it would be like, it was, there was no discussion because it had all been decided in a workshop and I didn't catch on to that for, you know, a few years into my town committee work, so.
True. It seems as simple to me as there should be a policy in the select board that suggests, no, suggest that every possible time, any meeting being held.
Whenever, everyone, whenever everyone is in this room for a meeting.
That's apparent. Everybody in this room must be livestreamed.
Is meeting, every meeting in this room should be livestreamed.
Yep. Now, that should be done.
In archives.
Oh, yeah. Which is an upgrade.
Absolutely.
Which is.
Exactly.
Can I have a quick question regarding?
Sorry, Tom. I need the exercise, I don't know if you do.
Tom Ressick, 67 Rosson. We have a huge history of select board meetings on tape. Are those savable? Because that is really valuable.
Yes.
Information.
Yes.
And I know they're not up on YouTube yet.
Not yet. We're, we're working on it, but that's a very good point and that's something that we are really trying to figure out because we'd like to have the archive of every meeting that we have.
And we.
But I mean, the past ones before you went on YouTube, those, you still have access to all those?
Yes, and that's what we're working on, trying to figure out an easy way to get them all onto YouTube so that anybody can go in and look.
You don't want to lose.
Yeah, and, and the answer to that is less definite, I would say, than, than, I, I don't think there's a definite yes till we have all of them from before. The Town Hall streams technically keeps them for a year and what we're, we do have DVDs though. The policy has banned that we have a DVD copy of all the select board meetings from, since we started, but it's a real pain in the neck to burn those back, put them each in, burn them and then upload them.
Have we been doing it up till now?
No, I've been working on digitizing the town records. So ideally, we can get them off of Town Hall streams in their digital format already and then re-upload them in batches, which shouldn't be too much of a problem, but it's a, we're working on it, but we agree it's important. Yeah, it's very important. We do always have the DVDs, but it will take a lot longer to do it that way.
I think we should motion a policy.
To?
To require that all meetings are held here.
Maybe you could keep it as simple as, um, you know, you've, you've all just agreed to direct me to speak to the committee chairs about.
Fine with me.
Livestreaming committee meetings that are in here.
Okay, I think the directive should be to, or you should, uh, commit to well, commission and committee chairs to utilize, must utilize livestreaming in all meetings in the John and our French conference room going forward and to maximize utilization of this room.
And can just investigate what it would take to, to put streaming into another room in the Opera House? Because we have two good, two other locations that we could do.
Great.
It might be, make more sense for the third floor because, for instance, there's a couple meetings on the 27th, there's a concert that night, so the Tucker Room wouldn't be.
Oh, I see.
The best choice.
I see. Cool. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the collective bargaining agreement for the police union contract. Anybody have any questions on, on the contract?
I would move that we accept the collective bargaining agreement as presented.
A second, but I want some discussion first.
You can do that. You can do that.
Has there been any changes since we spoke a couple weeks ago? Okay. That's the end of my discussion.
That was quick. That was quick. Did you want to say anything else before we go to?
Nope, we'd be happy to have you do your vote.
No, thank you.
I'll make one other comment. I noticed in the news today that Thomaston is trying to figure out what's going to happen with their police department. And I just have to say, I'm thrilled that we have a very strong, vibrant, committed police force in this town and work really hard to make sure it stays that way.
With that, a call for vote, all those approve of the collective bargaining agreement, please say yes. Four zero.
Do you want to sign that now?
Do you have a copy?
Should be here, isn't it? I was there.
It's recorded, Randy. What are you going to?
Use your copy, Randy.
Is there one in here, Audrey? Thank you, Janice.
So we can use yours?
Yeah.
All right.
You think we were going to change it or something before? No, there was just the one page that Janice sent out today. We wanted to make sure it was in there.
It's there. We'll, we'll sign it this evening. It's part of our package.
There's a new page that went out today that we.
No, this page.
Just the.
Just the. Okay. It's like, ah!
And Allison, everything's different.
What have I done? Okay.
Alan, don't lose Wesley because I want him to go home.
He likes to work nights, remember?
Right.
Anything else? Randy, please, chief? Anything else is us.
Mm-hmm.
All right. We'll do it then. No, thank you. Thank you for all the hard, hard work. With that relatively easy one, we'll go on to a discussion as we have in the last few weeks, Jeremy, on, on ordinance amendments or ordinance status.
What are you looking for here in particular?
Oh, actually, I'll introduce it with a, you know, Taylor, Taylor couldn't make it tonight. And we had discussed, the two of us, about the.
Stephen Moore.
Waterways. I'm not sure what the title of it is, but we had a brief chat and one long story we led to was some of the questions about what are we trying to solve and, you know, where are we going and what investigation? He's going to have one more meeting with the, the group and then come to the select board to tell them where they're at and what they see, what the problems are, where the areas are and what, what approach might be, because it may not always be an ordinance.
Yep.
So that's kind of the status of that.
All right. That makes sense on that one especially. Um, I, just so you know, I've been sitting in on some of those and giving them some little bit of guidance as they've been moving forward. As far as ordinances, the planning board is holding a public hearing next Thursday on cannabis cultivation in town. I worked really hard, I think, to, um, propose a cultivation ordinance, which was, I don't know if everyone knows, but the, the select board appointed the cannabis working group or the marijuana working group. They spent about a year working on some recommendations. And then they provide them to you. And then they provide them to you. I took, we took them to the planning board, I took them to the planning board and then I kind of, over, over time, we had a lot of work, workshops on it, discussions on it, scaled them back a fair amount from where they were proposed, they originally proposed. So I think we have a pretty good ordinance in place going to public meeting or public hearing next Thursday on cultivation, which is, I think, a measured approach to it. It doesn't open up big, big grows, marijuana grows in town. It really limits the size of them and it limits outdoor grows as well because of potential odor issues. I, I know, I understand it's a new thing and I think, you know, some people may be really concerned about it, but it is a new thing. It is now illegal, you know, to do this in the state of Maine and the working group is really proactive about getting something passed and again, I think the ordinance that I've drafted and the planning board, I think unanimously at this point supports, is a good place to start for the town of Camden. That's that. We also have formula-based food restriction zoning amendment on the, for a public hearing next Thursday. And what that would do would take, it defines what a formula-based food restaurant is, formula-based restaurant is. I don't have the verbiage right in front of me, I should. It's been beat through my head for like four months now. But in essence, it kind of says that if you're a chain or a franchise that shares a logo or trademark with 50 other stores or other facilities, wherever they are, whether they be in Maine or anywhere in the United States, then that's a formula-based restaurant. And so what the proposal is, is to put those types of restaurants out in the B2 zoning district. And I don't really.
Hannah Ford.
Subway Hannah Ford.
And then over by Hammond Lumber is some, is the B2 zone in town.
Hammond Lumber?
EBS.
Yes.
I, I know what it is.
Yes. There's, there's some B2 over there, yes.
Yeah.
On Union Street?
Yes, there is. Just saying. I didn't create it over there, but it's there.
EBS.
That's a good, it's a good point. It hasn't entered into.
Yeah. Just so people know where this came from, this stemmed from going back like 10 years ago, nine years ago, when Dunkin' Donuts was looking to come into town and there was, I think people got up in arms about Dunkin' Donuts wanting to come. I know they couldn't do a drive-through because we prohibit drive-throughs in town, but they were looking to come downtown and there was concern. I think there was about 600 people that came out opposing Dunkin' Donuts in downtown Camden. I think there was a movement to do a moratorium. That moratorium never got, you know, it never got put into place because the developer who was looking to do the Dunkin' Donuts said, all right, I'm leaving. I don't want to be in Camden. So I think the, most people's impression in town when I got here was that those are prohibited. After that, Dunkin' Donuts can't come here. The reality is, is they can. And I've heard a lot of concern about it. So we drafted an ordinance and there has, Dunkin' Donuts has been talking to us recently, just saying, so we drafted a proposal and the planning board worked on it probably five, five different times, five different meetings on it. Definitions went round and round and round and I think we have a good definition right now. Town attorney has looked at both of those ordinance amendments. He's okay with both of them. So that's where we are with the planning board. I think the planning board at this point is going to probably take April off. It's been quite a, I think, a long time for them. And then we're going to jump into some other.
I mean, come on. April, like, we don't, we, we don't take April off. We don't take months off. We're not like, oh, we are so tired.
I know. Well, I don't have any, I don't have any items for them to jump into right now. I mean, I've kind of, I've kind of been full on in ordinances for the last many months. I need to scale back some of my time on ordinance piece and do some other work that, yes. And granted, if there is.
You want them to meet without you?
No, they can. And if they want to, I'd love for them to do that and I'll encourage them to do that. I mean, I think talking about things like infill and lot size and density is important stuff, but what I was saying was we have no ordinances, no amendments that we're looking at currently. If someone comes in for a proposal, right, that needs site plan review, we'll definitely meet. I'm not, we're not like shutting down.
It's not looking so bad.
No, sorry if I led you to believe that.
It's all taking a breath, yeah, okay.
I just wanted to add, in the five meetings or so, or however many it was, that, I'm the liaison for the planning board, so I go to all those meetings. For the, the five or so meetings that the planning board met about the, the food ordinance, meant about 5,000 hours of Jeremy's time, reworking it, recrafting it every time. And I have to say, from what originally started and where it ended up, is an extraordinary document that really fits perfectly, I think, where the town wants to go and really hand it to Jeremy at taking all the feedback and finding the right mixture of ingredients to make it work.
And I will.
Thank you.
I will thank Jeannie as well in, in the office. She did a heck of a lot of it as well. So, thank you, Mark. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Any other questions on those?
I don't think we'll have it on the agenda too much in the future because we're kind of, we've got the corral around it right now.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Onto the approval of design for the Mechanic slash Washington Street parking lots.
Well, you can turn it back.
I know I am.
They're better.
I know. It's going fast.
Intro this first.
Yep.
Jennifer and I, Jennifer and I were miserating over the fact that it wasn't a mancintosh.
Last time we didn't even have, have.
All right, so I'm going to go on.
I think I'm right there.
I think you're right there.
I think we're good.
I think you're right there too.
I think so.
Of some sort.
Wow. That's a.
Yours. That's why I came rushing up here. I thought.
Mine dropped because yours dropped.
Okay.
I'm not going to, okay.
All right, so.
Audrey, will you please intro this whole topic, please, and where we're at and what's going on?
Yes, so just to give everyone some background on this item.
Let me give them a minute to get out the door.
Thank you, Mark. Crowd is winding down. Sure, the crowd is winding down.
End of the night. All right, so to give some background on where this ended for anybody who didn't see the prior meetings, the Mechanic and Washington Street parking lot project was put out to bid. The design that was put out to bid was the design that Deb is going to talk to you a little bit about. It was over budget by about $50,000. So the select board tasked myself and Rick Sibel with going back to our engineer as well as the contractor who put in the lowest bid and trying to find out what can we do to reduce the scope of the project to bring the project within budget. We were able to find, you know, some items that could, you know, reduce the overall cost of the project, such as changing the blockwork that's used on the wall, removing some of the streetlights that are a cost. We looked at other things like, you know, changing some of the curbing and the landscaping and we looked at the configuration of the retaining wall. So, you know, those are some of the things that we looked at. I think, you know, around the time we were doing this, it's also, we're to spread that the design was considerably different from what we currently have there. So that kind of brought up the discussion in the community about, do we want such a different design of the lots from what's currently there? I think that there was, you know, discussion around budget and some of this predates me. So all I can say is that the budget discussion around when the money was approved to fix up the parking lots and to fix the wall was really, it was just going to be kind of paving the lots, fixing the wall. There wasn't really a lot of talk about the detail around that. So I think that there was some concern that has gotten its way back to the select board as well as me. I've had a lot of emails about this too, about the redesign of the lot and, you know, what that, just concerns, especially from downtown business owners about, you know, what the impact of that could be. So I think that given all of that feedback that we've gotten, I think there was some interest in the select board of understanding a little bit more about the design team's process and what they've done and what they're proposing and then just hearing a little bit more about, you know, further investigations that we could do. And I'm, and also, I'm, I'm happy to say that there was a little bit of urgency around this when it was bid out and we needed to make a decision, but we've got a contractor who's really interested in, you know, doing more work in Camden and they really want to work with us and they've agreed to hold their price if it's done this season. So we do have a little bit of flexibility. I'm not saying that we're absolved of making any decisions at all, but it, we do have a little bit of breathing room with this for things like, you know, more input and feedback from, you know, business owners and community members who have concerns. So I just wanted to set that all up before we start the discussion that we don't have the same level of urgency that we were concerned that we did going into tonight.
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. Dodge?
Hi, I'm Deb, Deb Dodge, co-chair of the design team and Rafi Baeza, who's a member of the design team, is here as well and Andrew Hedrick from Gartley and Dorsky. I'm going to give you all and, and the community a little background of how we got to this part, of where we are. I think it's sort of important to understand how the Mechanic Street Lot figures into the bigger picture of downtown. So I will address that and Rafi will do a very sort of brief presentation of where we're going next after the design is settled for the lot. And then Andrew, Andrew was going to do the nitty gritty on the technical, the engineering design. I am not talking about engineering or design. It's not my bandwidth. So I am not a PC person. And somebody told me that there's some way to make this a bigger screen.
Hit F-11.
Hit where?
Hit F-11 at the top line.
F-11.
This PowerPoint?
How about?
No, I know that's not, it's not PowerPoint. Yeah, you know.
Oh, okay. So we got a little extra stuff here.
Yeah, just close.
Does that close up? No. See, it's the wrong spot if you're a Mac person.
There you go.
It's hard.
Okay.
Okeydoke, there we are. The downtown design team, the bigger picture on the Mechanic Street Lot. You all know that the design team has been around since 2015. We were part of the downtown network board. We were not an official Town of Camden committee. So our work has been done really under the auspices through the downtown network board up until we were adopted by, by the town. So that's where a lot of our work has happened, has happened as the design team is part of the downtown network board. Let's talk about the big picture for the Mechanic Street parking lot and how it fits into downtown. The police, Chief Gagny and his staff, Mark, did a survey last year of all of the marked and patrolled spaces in downtown Camden. And as you can see, the total of marked and patrolled spaces is 625. You can see what they're made up of. 146 all day, 423 two-hour spaces and we have 23 spaces that are 15, 30 or 60 minutes, 33 miscellaneous type spaces for a total of 625. And the select board has just wonderfully acquired with town approval, 140 spaces up on the Knox Mill and Skate Park. Skate Park bring our total spaces to 765. So the Mechanic Street Lot, just sort of help to put this in perspective a little bit, currently has 21 spaces. I think somebody else counted 22, but 21, 22. The redesigned lot as it stood, the design that you saw a couple of weeks ago, has 14, but we've added two on street where we've closed off a curb cut. So that gives us 16 spaces for a reduction of five, which if you do the numbers, it's less than 1% of the total spaces available and only 1.1% of the total two-hour spaces. So I just wanted to give you guys just a little bit of a big picture, not to just think of the Mechanic Street Lot in, in isolation. And this is where all of our work comes from, is the downtown master plan, which was approved in 2012. And guys, this is our copy here. We use it. It's our bible. It is what guides what we have been working on really since we were, since we started as part of the downtown network board. In 2011, your predecessors unanimously allocated $20,000 to create the downtown master plan, which is a cohesive strategy for the future of downtown. There were five working group meetings, including members of CDAC, Downtown Business Group, Planning and Select Boards, Chamber and Town Staff, 23 people in total. There were two public forums, a total of 175 citizens attended those forums. They did an online survey of which 300 people replied and it was adopted by the select board in April of 2012. So this has really been the guiding document for the design team. And some of the things that we have supported and worked on from the master plan, the downtown enhancement grant, we've been helping set the priorities for the implementation with DOT on the downtown enhancement grant. We supported the extension of the downtown TIFT to include the Knox Mill, which helps creates more funds for the redevelopment of downtown. We've applied for project canopy grants for trees on Elm Street and our LED streetlight project, which improves pedestrian safety at night and reduces our night, the night skylighting. We developed a plan to improve the public landing bathrooms and provide showers. That was done in concert with two of our architects on the design team, Richard Bernhardt and Meg Barclay. And we've been working on ongoing efforts with Rick Sibel to help improve the access through the Harbor Walkway. And we've worked, been working on for years and lobbying the streetscapes on Washington and Mechanic Streets and that's where the new lot design comes from. And in the works, signed inventory and wayfinding recommendations and the creation and funding of the mural for the wall on the Mechanic Street Lot, which Rafi will address when I'm finished. And I think this is an important note for you all to read and I like to read this out loud. This comes from the chapter on parking circulation in streetscapes in the downtown master plan. Parking and traffic have relegated downtown pedestrians to a subservient role to transportation and parking needs. The pedestrian environment has been overshadowed and compromised in order to maximize convenience for automobiles. The recommendations seek to improve pedestrian experience, safety and connectivity within the downtown by creating a pedestrian-focused streetscape. Chapter two is full of incredible information on the importance of walkability, the quality of life. It is backed up with studies from the Brookings Institute, the Main State Planning Office. The value of the walkability is important for businesses to attract business visitors and residents. Our downtown is pedestrian-oriented, but it isn't necessarily pedestrian-friendly. We have wide crosswalk expanses. We have blocked sightlines between vehicles and pedestrians. There are strong sidewalk and streetscape elements on Main and Elm Street, yet our other streets, Bayview, Washington, Mechanic, are short on amenities and appearance. They draw less foot traffic, which is a distinct advantage for some of our businesses. And we have a lack of effective wayfinding. You don't need to try and read those details, but these are the key recommendations out of chapter two on streetscapes, parking and circulation. And I highlighted the ones that really apply to Mechanic Street Lot. Recommendation, make improvements to Mechanic Street. Better integrate Washington Street, Knox Mill and Tannery Lane into the downtown area. Develop a parking wayfinding system. Beautify lots and enhance pedestrian circulation routes and implement the River to Harbor Walk and park improvements. So guys, if you can look at that diagram, that is the recommended redesign of the Mechanic Street Lot as a result of our 2012 master plan. And if notice, there's no parking. There's infill development in that back corner and there's a wonderful large public and green space. So where did we go? Well, we went.
That means a building.
Infill is a building.
Yep.
So where did we go? We went to evolution, not revolution. So in order to fill most of the master plan recommendations for downtown, the Mechanic Street Lot, we adopted the principles of the master plan, but we adapted them to what the town needs were. And as a result, we believe the plan eliminates a confusing traffic flow, which is safer for the people using the lot and walking through the lot and accommodates the larger cars and trucks of today. It relocates the bike rack where it's actually usable and some of you may remember seeing a bike rack in the far internal corner that was absolutely crushed by somebody that tried to park there. There's a new handicap space that is safer and van accessible, so somebody with a handicap van can actually lower a ramp and get out into the parking lot and then access the sidewalk. And beautification, Mechanic Street is no longer a downtown stepchild and it will draw visitors to Mechanic Street and the Washington Street businesses. And importantly, provides a link to the future River to Harbor Walk. So here are just a couple of shots that were taken last year of some current conditions. You can see cars trying to come in and out at the same time. And we have a shot of some people walking through. The circular photograph shows you people that are actually sort of dodging a truck that's coming in. So here's a quote that I'm going to end with. It comes from our master plan. It could be said that parking lots are often a visitor's first and last impressions of the downtown. Camden can make a difference in that experience by offering clean, safe and attractive parking areas. A pedestrian-oriented environment with complimentary streetscape elements, landscaping and signage has a powerful impact on its users. So our downtown master plan that was adopted, worked on by the public and adopted in 2012 guides not just the design team, but there are many, many goals that CDAC has as well because as hopefully you are somewhat familiar with it, chapter one is all about economic development. Parking circulation in streetscapes goes hand in hand with a vibrant downtown. It's not just businesses, but it's the whole picture of how our downtown is used and presented to visitors and residents alike. And with that, since we really stopped working on the specific design back in 2018 when it finally came up, we moved on to sort of another exciting chapter with this Mechanic Street Lot. And I'm going to let Rafi come up and give you all a short preview, a kind of what's coming next before we move on to the nitty gritty.
Thank you.
Also, I, I.
Also, is this the Washington Street Lot too? Because in everything we've been talking about, there's also the Washington Street Lot?
Actually, Washington Street Lot was definitely considered and was part of that. And I could have said the same things about the Washington Street Lot. But I was really given the impression that the Washington Street Lot was not of your primary concern. I was really wanting to give you guys the background on why the Mechanic Street Lot has been redesigned the way it is. But certainly, all of those elements that we talked about on the Mechanic Street Lot apply to Washington Street. And in many ways, the attractiveness of what happens on Washington Street is almost more dramatic when you make that change. Because in many respects, Washington Street can appear more like an alley than an actual street that would draw anybody down to the bottom of Mechanic Street to access those businesses.
Definitely. I just think it's when you take into account the total number of lost parking spaces, which ends up at 12 or 13, depending on--
You still run the numbers with the bigger picture. You know, we're still--
We're going to get there. Let's let Raffi talk to his thing, and then we'll--
Absolutely. And you guys can, you know, I understand your questions. And let me say, all of those questions about the loss of parking spaces, removing a curb cut, or discussions that we had many, many, many times, you know, we have a downtown businessperson on the committee, we have people that have lived in town many, many years and use the downtown. So these are not questions that were not addressed by any of us. But as I said, in many degrees, this has been our bible of where this community has said the town wants to move, what the future of town should be like. So I wanted you to understand where we came from, and what the goals were, and what the goals are that are in this well-used bible. Raffi, come on up.
Thank you, Doug. Okay. Thank you so much. I'm actually going to, I'm a visual person, so I've created a piece that I'm going to project. Let's see. Again, I'm a Mac user too, so-- How do I get to the internet?
I don't know.
That should do it.
Yep.
Yeah, that'll do it.
Double click.
I sent you that link on the--
You got my email? Are you able to--
No, I can't get my emails here.
I think it is.
Oh.
Do you want to use, do you just want the internet?
Yeah.
I don't mind. If you plug in the Apple TV, you can use my computer and do it from there.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So then, is the Apple TV, if you just-- Actually--
Good idea.
So--
Thank you, Allison.
I just want to unplug it until I get back to it turns on. Then-- Unplug the-- Yes.
Well, I might as well take, can I, I'll just, I have some comments or whatever. So this is looking at a larger vision of maybe that area, which I see as an, you know, underutilized, you know, poorly designed, bad section of downtown. And I think in general, a lot of the solutions that we provided helped with the idea of providing organization to a disorganized lot. That's one idea. Another, that people come to Camden because it's beautiful, not because it has parking directly in front of the place that they're planning to go to. So I feel that beauty is a huge asset for the town. I really like the staircase that's built into this current design, because as a kid, I was always, and I've been spending a lot of time there, people climb that wall because that's a natural kind of pathway to go from downtown up to Washington Street. And now that we have Longgrain there, and the wonderful things going on at the Camden Opera House, you know, it's a nice place to park and then be able to walk as opposed to, you know, scaling the broken-down wall. And just in general, public art is, I'm very passionate about it. When I was the creative director at the Farnsworth, we were involved with creating a mural across from, where is it? Across from Cafe Miranda. And that's been so well-received, you know, everyone wants to take a picture there. It's a staging place for public events. So, you know, coming into Camden, I don't see why we can't have public art. And I think this is an area where it would just enhance that whole--
I'm not doing it.
Something got changed on--
Is there still connection?
You just turned it off.
Sorry.
That's, uh, that's fine.
I do this every week, but this is a little bit different. It's like this has been--
Is that, was that the connection that was broken?
Oh, yeah.
Green was the HDMI, and the yellow was the DGA, if that makes any sense.
I, I, that's, that's helpful.
That's what we went through on the--
Okay, that's--
Just lying.
So, yeah--
Panic twin.
I don't know, you can't get the internet on this computer? I also don't even know how to open a PC, never mind. I mean, I've never had this one not connect to the internet either, so-- Do you know how to open that up? Yeah, that I can do. Is this not--
Not working?
Well, there-- Well, no, that can, that can go in. No, if you got it connected to the internet--
No, no, it was saying not connected to the internet.
Is there a switch that turns the internet on?
Yeah, there should be. Allison, can our machine get Wi-Fi?
I don't have my iPhone. Do you have, are we connected? Is anybody connected to the internet on their phone?
I mean, I'm connected. Do you want a hotspot? Is that what you're--
Yeah.
We don't have any internet, so I'm connected. Should if you just, just right-click. Right-click. Camden Opera House. That's us, isn't it? Here we go. Now we just need to be plugged in. They do, right-click and connect to the Opera House. What a shame.
That's all right. I mean, that's--
Well, we'll do it next time.
All right. Yeah, we'll do it next time.
It's like something--
Once you go on the internet, it blacked out.
One thing that we had that was working doesn't really work.
All right, let's continue, Raffi. Let's talk to--
You want to say some more things before we move on to Andrew?
Yeah, I can just reiterate what you think what's in the--
Microphone.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, this probably was a lavalier.
Oh.
Oh! Which computer? It's the magic of Jeremy.
Andrew?
It was Allison. It was Allison, you just--
Appears to be DGA.
Elliot?
Hey, guys, we're good.
Guys, we got a meeting going on here.
Well, it's understandable that they tuned out a second.
I understand. Just bring it back to order, thank you. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Hi, attack town.
Probably internet connection's there now.
Right, yeah, I was being facetious.
Big print too, I can read it.
Add troubleshoot HDMI connection to the list of work orders. Yeah. Well, yeah, this is working fine. You can't even get the HDMI thing in there right now. Just got to pick right up on it.
What's that?
Oh, yeah.
Should have come up through the floor on that, or come up into this cabinet rather than having this walking across the--
It was just, I mean, it was working perfect. I use it every meeting, so I think it was fine. There we go. Can we just turn off the lights, maybe, or there's that--
Hi, my name is Raffi Baeza, and I'm a member of the Camden Design Committee. We are working with the town manager and the development director to revitalize this parking lot. Everyone knows how beautiful Main Street Camden is, but the backside of the town is a bit of a forgotten space. With the thoughtful redesign of this parking lot, not only will we make it greener and safer, but we will also have the opportunity to include public art. Our hope is that we'll turn this location into a destination. We're ultimately taking a crumbling wall that is an eyesore and turning it into an exciting asset for the town of Camden. We are hoping the community can give me my best effort and upraise plenty necessary for the mural. Thank you. We are excited to introduce local artist Colin Burns.
I love drawing people. They always love drawing people. People are the most beautiful things to me because every single person in the world is completely different from others. Everyone writes a story just by living their lives, and I think that that deserves to be celebrated. So a lot of my work all but work is centered around celebrating things about people that they think is worth celebrating, whether it's, you know, where they came from, or what they do, or what their hobbies are, but it's always celebrating something about that person, and every single one of those pieces is unique.
I don't want to dismiss this, because I think the people that are on here are just so impressive, and just been a lot of thought, I think, gets put into this. So, that's it?
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Very nice to do.
I mean, definitely in favor of having a mural there. I, just to be clear that that wasn't part, that is no part of the reservation.
Right. No, I know it's a separate issue. My feeling is, as soon as you walk past that five-and-dime, you're in the parking lot. There's access going both ways there. Whereas with this proposal, you have a green space along that edge, and it isolates the parking--
Right.
--to that area versus the whole, you know, taking up the whole corner. So, you know--
Thanks, Raffi. Let's get Andrew to come up and talk a little bit to the drawing stuff, so we can talk to something. Yeah, you can kill that now. It was worse.
No, I was just--
I know, I know. Why don't you bring the easel up? It'd be easier. That board is terrible for that.
I can re-vote, I can re-vote.
That board's a challenge.
My name is Andrew Hedrick. I am a civil engineer at Gartland Dorsky. They have said one thing about this proposed parking lot. What I'm here to do is I can answer any of the questions you have. I know I've heard a lot of concerns about access and mobility and space sizing. And the big one I heard was about spaces lost. And as an engineer, the first thing I do is I look at these things. I look at the lots, I look at how things are laid out, as we did on this original lot and as it exists. The first thing I do is I start putting Xs on spaces that actually don't meet any current standards, and they're just lines on pavement. So you go around the existing lot. Here's a blown-up section of the existing lot. And you can go through this section through here and look at the spaces that can't be used. So the Camden ordinance has a 10-by-20-foot space requirement. That's the parking space. Then they want you to have a 20-foot aisle, and then on the other side, another 10-to-20 feet foot space. That's 60 feet in total, essentially. What you have in this Mechanic Street Lot is about 58 to 60 feet, so you're close. The difficulty is that doesn't take into account that there's a utility pole, there's a retaining wall, there's propane tanks, there's crumbling wall sections, and there's lots of other things going along that. So I drove by today, actually, and I noticed that all the cars, they're short, they park short. So they stay, they don't pull right up to that retaining wall, they don't pull right up to those utility poles, they're sitting about two or three feet behind where that starts. So it forces those cars out. So we're already short on our distance that we need, the 60-feet ideal, like worst-case scenario, 60 feet. And then you have a car that's parking short of that, and they're pushing the car back into the travel lanes. And ultimately, it requires you to have three, four, or five more feet in there to actually get vehicles in and out. And we know, we've all gone by that parking lot, and it's absolutely full, all the cars are in there, you have spaces for everybody. But they, there are all a lot of compact cars that get in and get out, and you don't have like any of the modern vehicles, not that those aren't modern as well, they're probably more modern than the other ones, but the larger-sized vehicles that can't have access, you actually can't make the turn. And I was glad to see one of those photos that showed the two vehicles reaching each other, because I have tried this every which way, trying to get two vehicles by there, using my programs, using my turning radiuses, they just don't work. I've seen it done, but they're small cars, they stop and wait. So the benefit of the two entrances and the exits, I looked at it as, well, you can't actually function as two, you only have one that actually works at a time. Because I've been in that lot, I pulled in, and what happened is this person started to come around the corner, and they had to stop, and they had to back up and wait for somebody to make a vehicle make that corner. So the radius to make a vehicle around this corner currently, and then to do the same thing at the same time, it doesn't work. You can't get two vehicles past there. I'm sure if there's nobody parked there, and you can squeeze over a little bit, or wait, or time it just right, you actually might be able to make it through there. I've seen cars, they make it in tight spaces all the time, they make it by, you know, so me to say it never happens, you know, that's not accurate. But it's very difficult to do, and it doesn't meet a standard, an engineering standard. So trying to do the other approach to things is acknowledging that we didn't really have the two access points through that lot to begin with. We started looking at the one access point. We all understand, nobody likes a dead-end parking lot. You pull in, you get stuck, now what do you do? So to remedy that situation, what we did is we put a lot of striped at the end of the lane, so we use that van-accessible spot at the end of the parking, as well as one on the other side that we'll use, to allow you to pull into the lot entirely, use that space if you pull in, and they happen to be all full, you can't tell until you get into the lot, you can pull in and easily turn around. And we're not talking like little parking space, it's 14 to 16 feet wide, all hatched, striped, no parking signs will go up there, on both sides of that. So even if you have two or three vehicles that happen to pull in simultaneously, they can easily pull in this, queue up. Much more vehicles can fit in there than you could in the current situation, by the way. You can pull in this area, queue and wait while the other person makes an easy turn, turns around, and exits. And they're exiting from the same location they pull in, which leaves this corner open and clear, easier to see, you don't have a lot of vehicles in and out. It's a real difficult area when you are a pedestrian, as you know, I mean, the curb is nearly flush out there. You come around the corner, you walk into a flush curb, there's a lot of loading areas in there. You come around the corner that's really not defined well, and then into another curb cut that people can be pulling in and out of instantly. So it was just the way that this whole design committee looked at that, and it ended up creating that safe way around this whole parking lot, and kind of still maintaining sufficient enough parking. I know that's a broad term. We did lose, I think, what, 12 spaces in total? If you take both Mechanic and the Washington Street, we lost 12 spaces. But again, going back to the standards, there is not one space in this parking lot that is even nine feet wide or 18 feet long, not one. The lane distance between these stalls here are 17 feet in space, even closer-- even closer to your town ordinance of 10 feet by 20 is what the requirements are with a 20 foot lane. This should be 60 feet long and it's short about 10 feet from what you need to get a actually true space in there. And the same is true for none of these spaces along the corner. There's four, excuse me, there's four spaces in this lot alone that don't meet those requirements as well. The other ones are tight, but we know you can fit a car into a little bit narrower space. The difficulty with these two down here is that they're 17 feet long, ignoring the fact there's a retaining wall in front of them. So a vehicle that's about 18 feet long pulls in there, it actually sticks out beyond the parking space. I think one of those photos showed that. It actually sticks out beyond the parking space and you can't actually get either one of these vehicles out. If a compact car pulls in there, it works just fine. So I think if you're looking at keeping that number of spaces and trying to keep it the same, I think if you change it entirely to a compact car lot, it might work. But I think that needs to be identified and you really should put up signs and hold those car sizes down so you don't get one truck pulling in the middle of that lot, kind of oblivious, taking up three spaces, pulling in there and blocking everybody else in every other direction. I think it's worth looking at some of these other options if you truly want to keep the number of spaces up and trying to keep the actually mobility through the lot and be able to get in there and get out at the same time.
Yes? Um, just, just a comment. I've sat in the design team meetings before, even before they were a town committee, I just started going. And I've watched the development, the plans and working with the, the parking lot. And I understand there is, there are people going, I don't know what to do, it's, I'm used to it. And people are resistant to change and it's standard fact and it happens. But I think that if we allow this to go through in a very short time, people will be thankful, it'll be a better place to park. And, and the example I want to use is, I, I have to say this delicately because I'd like to stay married. My wife will do anything to avoid parallel parking. She doesn't like it, won't do it, it's the worst added, she hates it. She will not go into either one of these parking lots because they are so different, the parking lot. The Washington Street especially, so horribly, she will not go into that. She will parallel park before she will go into those lots. And I'm telling you, if she will parallel park into those lots, those lots are useless.
Except for the people then.
It's, it's, you know, I know people are resistant to change, but after the change, you know, from everything I've seen, it will be a magnificent change. It'll help the downtown area, be part of the, the design plan like, and my wife will park there, which will make her life easier. You know, we did just get, we're going to lose a few spaces. We did just get 140 more spaces, you know? It's, you know, people don't walk enough as it is. Walking a little bit is not that big a deal. I'll make a commitment to never park there and always park on Knowlton Street if, if we move ahead. I can't make my wife do that, but I, I'd be glad to do that. I think it's important to do this work and to, to make this change and make this town a little better.
Excellent. Anybody else have questions for Andrew or anybody? Please, I do. I'm done. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss?
Maybe it's a public.
Elliot, if, come up here to talk, please. If you don't, I'm sorry, but it's. Yep, E L L I O T T.
Where is the Camden House of Pizza?
Right here. Can you maybe hold on to the microphone because we'll, if you take it with you, then.
Thanks, Elliot.
We don't have to, I mean, yeah, like you can move it from there.
Okay, thank you. There are additional parking spaces now along here?
Yeah, we added two additional spaces to Mechanic Street.
This area right here is commonly used by delivery vehicles, multiple delivery vehicles at the same time on some days.
Yes.
So how are they going to be accommodated in this arrangement?
The delivery accommodation will be this location. We see that a lot of, of vehicles use this currently to deliver. The benefit of having them over here is they're around the corner, they're out of all this. They shouldn't be parking behind these vehicles that are already trying to park in theirs. It's actually rather dangerous when they are sitting in this location. So we push them around the corner, they can park here. And they all know scheduling, they all do planning and they'll know that on Tuesdays, somebody else is delivering at that point and they're going to have to accommodate those schedules if they don't have the two spots available. I'm sure, just like this, they'll probably pull in behind this vehicle if somebody's there and they happen to mess something up as far as scheduling and they could hang out in this back portion, that there's another 25, 30 feet. It's not recommended by any means, but there would be the additional space. It would just be pushed further back, but there would still be a sidewalk leading right to.
Where's the crosswalk come in?
The crosswalk's right in the corner here.
Is there parking right here now?
No, no, it's open. There's no parking.
There's no parking on the curb.
Yep, but there's, there's no parking there currently.
The private parking?
Correct, yep.
So the delivery UPS truck, FedEx, they're going to park here now?
Yeah, that's where they currently park now. Yeah, the trucks actually will pull up on the mountable curb and they pull up and they, they hang out in both situations, whether they're either in the road entirely or some of them will actually mount that curb section.
So I think I've heard you describe this and this as potential delivery vehicle spaces.
Correct, yes.
On each side of the crosswalk.
Yes, yes, yeah, where they currently do it now, rather than at the entrance of the, the parking lot.
Okay. Well, I think that's jamming up the crosswalk.
Again, it's, it's less than ideal, it isn't a downtown situation. So it's, it's never preferable to have a vehicle parked adjacent, directly adjacent to a crosswalk in any circumstance. But sometimes you have to make those, you know, situations better. And by doing that and allowing them a spot temporarily, we're not going to stripe it and say loading zone by any means, we'll put any of those things in there, but it's just something that's been happening, you know, for years and years and years. So I, I didn't think we should restrict it or even push them out of that area for the very concerns you have. So if they do have to park, there's still those available spots over there.
Okay. Thank you, Elliot. What was the other drawing you brought?
There were just some other options that were sketched up during some of these plans that we went through. I wanted to have them available if there were some other options that people wanted to discuss. We've been going through this for, I think at Gartland Dorsky, we did the original design probably 25 years ago. In the, 19, and the object at that point was to maximize spaces, put as many spaces as you could in there. And we did that, and I think.
But that was your, the current design is your design?
Yeah, the original one, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it really is impressive how many.
You can't, you couldn't possibly fit anything else in there, that's for sure. So, you know, whether they're encroached on now with placement of utility pole and propane and the larger vehicles that are growing and growing, I think.
Did they have different standards back then?
They definitely were. I mean, even, parking standards are, are subjected to who's looking at them, you know? So they always give out suggestions, you look at like general engineering standards and they always say, well, you need a, a 22 foot travel aisle. But then you can.
Like our zoning ordinance, you guys built the, the plan 19, in 1997, to our zoning ordinance.
I believe at the time, I wasn't there at the time, so I assume that's what they do. They would have used the most current parking standards, which were a little bit narrower lanes, a little bit shorter spaces. And over the last 20 years, these things have grown, you know, because they're large SUVs that take up three of these spaces now, you know, right or wrong.
California's eight and a half feet wide.
Yeah, yeah, well, there you go, yeah. So you can still do some of those narrow spaces.
But do they require it?
Well, although, all the ones we do here, these are all nine space, these nine feet, you know? That's a more standard parking spaces, nine by 18 and a half, that's, that's kind of a, a standard space.
They aren't all getting bigger.
The, the 10 by 20 is a, a lot larger, but the standards in general have stretched out. Um, so here are the other two options, I actually did. Well, the ones that I brought with me tonight, there's probably, I think one of my drawings says 99 on it, but, but regardless, here we are. So, essentially what I did is I tried to take that approach of going back to what was there. Going back to what was, is currently there and trying to make some subtle improvements on it to eliminate some of the spaces that I had concerns with and, and I didn't really make the standards. So what I did, what we did, is we basically tried to utilize a little bit of the center aisle here. We pushed things off utilizing the same retaining wall location, save this back corner and kind of push things off a little bit while still maintaining some aisle widths and getting the parking space count up. It doesn't, as you can say, eliminate all the issues. I'm not a big fan of this, this option two, it's just one that I had and I was kind of moving. And as soon as I finished this one, I went to option three, which I like better, so you kind of follow down that path. But I didn't like how we ended up with a handicap accessible spot kind of in an odd location. You can't really access it well. And then it, you kind of puts you off to the side there and you're getting out and you're crossing traffic again to get to the sidewalk. But it was one of the options we came up with. The difference here is this has 20 spaces. So we're going from 16 up to 20, so we gained four additional spaces, but they all are usable spaces. In the center aisle, we have switched to compact stalls, which is true on this option three. We did switch to compact stalls, which are eight feet wide and 16 feet long, that fits the compact cars. But it, we still maintain the, the full width of aisle on this side to allow you to get into your parking space. And we accommodated for people pulling short of those retaining walls. So when you have a space that's 18 feet wide, there's nothing in front, people will pull right up. But as soon as you get a retaining wall or some obstruction there, they stop two or three feet short of that, so your space needs to get a little bit longer. So we tried to incorporate that, and this is actually option three and 3B, but. So the first one would, would keep this island out and we'd maximize that distance. And then the 3B would be to eliminate this other space and round out this radius here a little bit more. What that would do is that would allow two vehicles to actually pass in there and meet requirements. So you could actually drive through, if somebody happened to pull in simultaneously from both directions, they would actually be able to make it around that corner. You know, based on my software and everything that I put in there to look at this and my experience, they were able to be able to pass each other in that parking lot. They'd have to slow down, which is a good thing, but they'd be able to pass each other to make it through.
What are the dates on all these plans? Are they, is this a result of the, so two years ago, a town meeting, money was approved to take care of the parking lots? Are the, have these all been created since then or did you say one was 99?
No, it was option 99. No, no, no. So, no, I've, we've only been doing these plans for the last, I forget when the original contract was signed. But we've gone through many versions and iterations of this.
How much has the town spent on this exercise? Just, I mean, what part of the, is it 210,000 that was approved by voters?
It's engineering.
Have we taken that out of the box?
I think that a lot of it's come out of Rick's engineering line.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So the actual cost of this is really, could be much more than what voters were asked. It's like when it ends up in different departments, then we don't really know the true cost of it. I just feel like, having been on the budget committee during the time when this was pitched, and I was at the time not even feeling like we needed to do anything, as I tend to feel about things like this. And so, but it was, it was explained very clearly that there was a maintenance issue, there were things that needed to be done just to maintain the status quo. It wasn't about any of this redesign stuff, that, none of that was, none of that was, was pitched. And so it was, it was kind of like, no, we have to do this, this is just taking care of your infrastructure. And so this just seems like it's really.
Taken on quite a lot.
Taken on a life of its own, I don't know. But it's not your fault at all. I mean, I kind of like some of these and I wish I had known, and I, I think it really goes, what it does is it goes back to what Mark said at the beginning of the meeting, that there needs to be more. It must be very frustrating with changing select boards and people that are up on, you know, following along and then those people drop off and then a committee that's worked on a lot of things, you know, forgets, oh, time to change out two more select board members that haven't been brought up to speed. And then all of a sudden, it's like, it comes to us and we're like, what are you talking about? If, I, I think it, it would have been great if a couple of these things, you know, if they could have come to us and then we could have worked through it and then, I mean.
Well, do you want to say anything before I jump in?
I agree with Allison and I've, and I've also heard just so much negative public feedback and almost no positive, I'm sorry to say. And I'm really, this is my least favorite thing perhaps about being on the select board is gainsaying committee work because everyone is so great and such a great volunteer. I have probably heard from 30 people, maybe that's of various ages, cross-sections, and I share concerns. I, I have been, lived in this town most of my life. I guess I'm going to have to go out in various vehicles and I must be a really good driver or something because I definitely have not, I can under, I would love to see the mural, the beautification, some of the beautification. There's no doubt in my mind that that parking lot needs some help. I just don't know that this dramatic loss of parking spaces, loss of a second entrance is something that I can support.
And then there's also the Washington Street part of it.
Without more public feedback, at least.
We haven't even addressed.
Yeah, I think, remember, this goes back, when we talked about this a month or so ago. Mark, did you want to say something before I start?
Yeah.
Everybody's trying to avoid me. Just teasing, go ahead, Mark, quick, quick.
I'll get that one of these days.
Mark Haskell from up on Pearl Street. Back in the 90s, I was on the Parking Traffic Transportation Committee at that time. And I don't remember that initial discussion he mentioned about the original design of the way it is now. But I do know that since that time, one of the big things that Deb mentioned early on was the parking spaces that we have gained in the downtown area. You start with the lot next to the fire station. That lot was bought originally to build a new fire station public safety building. And I was instrumental, our, our committee was instrumental in turning that from a gravel lot that was blocked off into a parking lot. Because it was sitting there blocked off, we're waiting for the town to vote for the new building. They voted it down and the lot was empty. We ended up turning it into a parking spot. What they've just done in getting parking spots in the, the lot that they just bought.
Knowlton.
The Knowlton Street Lot, you're talking 200 to 300 more spaces than there were?
And 40.
140?
You're probably including the fire station lots.
Yeah, we're talking 140 plus spaces that weren't here. Losing the 12 and changing that corner from kind of the dregs of town. I hate to say that, but with this falling down wall, the dangerous situation of that road going up there, the repair work that needs to be done. I do remember a discussion with the selectmen a few weeks ago, months ago, when they were talking about the repair work had to be done. So why not do the whole thing at one time rather than end up coming back at a later date? I look at your first proposal with eliminating the, the entrance, which at first I adamantly thought that's wrong. Now that I see it and look at it, I think it's probably a very good solution to the problem. It opens up that area so that vehicles of the size we have, they can get in and out. I'm as guilty as anyone, I have a big truck that I occasionally take downtown and I've made the mistake of trying to pull into that lot. And it's impossible. And so I think what they're proposing, the first thing, would be a very good thing. Anytime you talk about downtown Camden and no parking, the issue's been going on for the last 40 years that I'm aware of and I don't think we're going to change it other than we keep adding spaces out of town and out of the area. But I think as it's presented, it's a pretty good project. And my only question at this point in time is I'd like to hear a little bit more discussion of the layout of the Washington Street Lot, that one right there, and how that's going to be changed.
Okay, thank you, Mark, thank you very much. I think what I wanted to say was, still want to say, is something relates to, to the process. Some of the don't want to debate downtown master plan, I do, do like discussing design details, but I'm not going there at this point. I, but I really, what really I believe that has not worked correctly here is related to finance. And that is to me, a couple of things, finance, money, money. And I think what Allison just mentioned exacerbated a little bit more in my mind. But one of the common flaws in, in doing work like this is not designed to budget. We have a budget. This project is probably nominally dependent, which bidder you pick, $280,000 to $300,000 project. The budget was 210. So if you recall, when we had the last select board meeting on this in February 12th, I believe it was. believe it was, it was me who said, yeah, okay, we'll go with the plan, but they gotta bring it within budget. That, because we, uh, there's a primary block and roadblock in my mind, we cannot be approving great designs that have not been monitored through the process for design creep, which happens all the time. Yes, we're facing a difficult construction market perhaps, but that needs to be taken into account. And I have to say this because I've been very vocal about the middle school and the building design committee and other places about designing to budget. I'm adamant about it. That, that, we, in the future, as a minimum, should be given the opportunity to look at option A, B, and C, what the relative benefits of them are, and then make, and a recommendation by a committee, but not a fait accompli. Because this is what happens. This has all been about, and that's why we're having a second meeting, in my opinion, is because of that discussion about the budget. And, and then it morphed into more discussion...
We were also told a few parking spots.
Right. We were also told two to three parking spots were lost only, and we find out it's 12 after the fact. Okay. That, that's, that's, you know, I'm, I'm really, really, really determined to bring this thing and that into budget. And that brought the discussion about, is there a Plan B that we could do that would, or revision that would bring it into the budget? And then, of course, that morphed into the discussion about one entrance, two entrances, and who likes what? And, 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 and some of the rage that's occurred, the rage, it has occurred from a public outreach on this, this topic of one, um, the one entrance kind of an approach. But I, I have really, really, really difficult time getting past even the first hurdle, and that is not designed to budget. It, it's, it's, it's a common flaw. Maybe somebody discussed it before we were here, but that, to me, that I can't approve.
May I address that?
Yeah, of course.
Just don't forget. I understand your point quite well. Um, a budget wasn't set for the design team to work within.
Why not? There wasn't, there weren't...
I know. You know, I'm not, I'm not the town manager, I'm not the select board, I'm not the budget committee, and I'm not the public works director.
So it was a blank check?
No, absolutely not. We didn't come to you to say, ram this down anybody's throat, and now that we know it's $258,000, you need to raise that. Nobody on the design team has said that to anybody in the town. Rick's been on this design team. We're working on the priorities of what the design team, partly as the downtown network board, is working on. We have to do, the parking lot surface sits in a mess, the retaining wall needs to be done, let's look at the design of the parking lot. So we gave input, set up priorities, gave a list of the things that were sort of on the wish list, based on a lot of the principles we've learned through the downtown master plan, and we came up and some plans were proposed to us. The plans are Rick's and the town's, and you go up to bid. That's how the process worked with us. We weren't told three years ago, when we were starting to work on this, you have $210,532 and now go design a plan around that. Number one, he's the engineer and you get a contractor that can tell you the prices. I'm just saying, that wasn't part of our process.
No.
We helped work on a project that the town was interested in doing, and we were informing the design based on what the town had adopted. So we weren't trying to create some highfalutin design that was going to be way over some budget and over any bid. So I take a little exception about...
You can.
How you're characterizing how the design team went about doing this.
I said, my preface was, the process has a problem.
Yeah. And there's been a lot of change in leadership and so...
Yeah, I understand, I understand, I understand all of that, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, I don't care what, who's working on what construction project in the town, that, the fact that somebody says they didn't have a budget is the first question I would ask if I was on a design committee. First question.
Well, next time we take anything on, Bob, we'll make sure we ask you about what, what our budget is, what your budget is. But I think one of the things that happens is, the town works on capital improvement projects.
Yep.
You assign some priorities.
Yep.
And hopefully, your guide, part of your guide and what's in that capital improvement project, is what the master plan is for the downtown revitalization.
Understood.
And that's where that starts, to me. It's on the town setting the priorities that have been outlined in creating capital improvement budgets. And then it can get passed on to the committees that are working in an advisory capacity to help you guys make those decisions.
Correct. You're saying it, and we're saying it, which, obviously saying it wasn't passed on. Was it...
I don't, yeah, and the budget was decided last year, and we've been working on this since 2015.
What?
As an advisory committee, as part of the downtown network board, to create a proposal for the town.
Again, this, this project is over budget and it has to come in within budget?
Of course. I, I'm not arguing with that at all.
Okay, so is design...
I was trying to give you the background of why some of these recommendations were made and the changes were made to the lot, so you can understand the big picture of how mechanic street fits into the whole, whole part of downtown, and the goals of keeping downtown Camden vital and revitalizing it, and keeping things just the way it is...
Sure.
Means that we will become like an aging beauty queen, just resting on its laurels.
Hmm, okay. Could happen.
The youngest people are the ones that...
I don't know. When, when was the budget set for this, 210?
I think it was before I was the, I think it was the last, 218, FY18.
So it's two years. All right, cool.
Let's go back to the tapes, everyone.
This is, I mean, and just...
Let me have Rick first, please.
I just wanted to say one thing, and I think that part of the confusion around this, I truly do, is just the fact that so many of us, I mean, I wasn't here, so I, I apologize for my part in the confusion.
Same here.
You know, I think that I had the impression that, you know, um, I guess everyone was a little more aware of what everybody else was doing.
Sure, sure. Rick.
For any project that I think we do in town, we don't necessarily have, we don't know what the cost is gonna be. We, we go with the engineer, he gives us a scope of the project and what their best estimate would be.
Right.
When it goes out to bid, you're, we're almost always over, and then we have to do cuts. And that's what we end up doing here. I don't know what it, what it is. It depends on contractors, availability, whether they can do the work.
It is.
How far in advance you put it.
It is.
We can do a, we can get, put a budget out a year before we're gonna do it and change, the prices change, so. I, I don't know how you can say, this is your budget, then you design, try to meet that budget, when that is what we do. We've come up with what we can and, with the engineering, engineering plans to tell us, you know, what we can do with that.
Understanding, Rick, and I think that's where the flaw in the process is. The flaw in the process is nobody's going out to get some cost estimates from the street during the process, because that's gonna happen to you every single time.
Yeah.
Getting a, a bid that is a, a school that's 40, 30% overbid, because nobody reached out to get street prices during the process to do a litmus test of where the market is.
I think Andrew, that's, they do, they do that.
This is a different thing.
As, as part of this process, that's what we do. We, we talk to contractors, we call them, we find out how much their unit prices are.
Good.
So we have a very good handle on putting these estimates together. We regularly see bids that are right there with what we estimate. The difficulty that you have with a project like this is you take, and we create an estimate based on that. Right there, that's what we have. We have the existing conditions. Actually, that's not even the existing conditions, but you get my point. We base it on the existing conditions. We talk, Rick and I talk, and we figure out what the goals are for this parking lot, how we want to improve things, and what we want to do. And based on that, I take that, I create a construction estimate, we come up with everything in there, and it's a detailed estimate, you know, how much gravel, asphalt, everything's in there. We put a 20% contingency on these things, just to make sure that we have a handle of what we're doing.
Sure.
All based on current contractor prices. The difficulty is, is some of these things sit around for years potentially, and Rick is good, he's always says, give me a new estimate, and what we do is we up, up at the percentages.
Right.
But, but the other thing that comes into play is, it depends on what contractors have. You can take a bid on this project today at $250,000, and you can take it in two months, and it can be $350,000, or it could be $200,000.
It's not gonna be 200.
There is that much significant in changes in prices.
Understand.
You know, so when you break everything down and you look at it, those prices significantly vary. One of the interesting things that I will point out is, we had the contractor that bid on this originally, give us, uh, pricing to look at what it would be, to kind of get back to some of these original scopes.
Right.
So we had the contractor to bid on this, look at what it would cost to do that option three. So eliminating that island, reducing some of those lights, reducing some of these other things, and the price was the same. So granted, whenever you change something, you know, you don't get exactly dollar for dollar, but I went through the calculations myself, and he had granite curbing in there that we significantly reduced, we had concrete that we reduced, but what we, what we did is we added, you know, 1,200 square feet of asphalt.
Right, right.
So it kind of balances the cost out.
Sure, sure.
There weren't a lot of things that were implemented into this plan that didn't necessarily cost more than it had the original plan gone.
During this last year process, what did your estimates say the price would be for construction of this?
Probably that $200,000. I suspect that's probably where that comes from, and he adds his, you know, 5, 10% on top of that, and I suspect that's where it came from. You know, but this was, always been a kind of a two-phase project. In fact, it was bid as phases, to do both the upper and lower project, in case we ran into situations like this.
Washington.
Correct. Yep. So the designs are pretty intertwined, but there was options to be able to take one piece of that and do one now, fully aware of how budgeting and contractor prices work. So we did go through that process, you know, throughout this. We do have numbers for both upper and lower, and we have multiple different options in there, and bid components, to try to lower and kind of work on some of these component, you know, prices.
And we still can follow those two phases, it's just we had...
Yeah, sure.
Trouble in that transition, because we're cutting the wall down.
Well, you're also doing regrading.
Well, that was the key, is try to lower that wall as much as we could, you know, to save costs on the wall, so we weren't building it up, and to kind of make the grading a, a lot more gentle back there. So to do that, we have come up with a plan that would make the parking in here and snowplow and all that in, in between the two difficult, if, if only one of the options was selected, but it is workable, it is feasible, and maybe a potential if, uh, wanted to be looked at closer.
How much is the Washington Street part of this?
79.
I might, I might add that.
I think it's 79,000.
Because, I mean, that's the other thing, is that it's, I mean, I've spent already a fair amount of hours, probably, of many hours, talking to people about the parking situation here. And it is a no-win situation, and there is not a single person that thinks we have enough parking there now. They have opinions about when the police department should tick it, and when they shouldn't, and when this and that, and it's just, I mean, it's, it's nonstop. I, I can't imagine talking to those people, I mean, and you, you tell them about the Knowlton Street parking lot, and I parked there today, I'm gonna start parking there all the time. But you tell them, and they don't, they don't want to walk there, and there are some people, like, you know, I have family members that have bouts of rheumatoid arthritis and things, and it is a huge ask to, for me, yeah, I should just not be lazy and I should walk every day from that parking lot. But for the other people that appreciate the chance to squeeze their little car into these tiny spaces so that they can do their grocery shopping at French and Braun rather than, or go to Longgrain, or rather than go to someplace where they can have their Walmart parking lot. So we're, we're saying that we're gonna actually eliminate virtually all of the public parking in the Washington Street Lot. That's what this, that's what this would do. There's the permit parking, which I learned just today, I didn't real, I thought that was all the apartment parking, but it's all town employees, which...
I can park on Knowlton Street.
I honestly, yeah, I was kind of like, oh my, I didn't, I really didn't realize that I thought we only had this as town employee parking. We probably should be practicing what we preach and, but, that aside, I mean, that's a lot of, that's a lot of parking to eliminate here too, and it's getting more congested as this area becomes more popular with Longgrain.
Well, fundamentally, where we're at is having to make a decision on some design or some process going forward, but I still believe it ties to how we get this thing to within, with the voters who approve for a budget for this work. Oh, reasonably close to it. And I'm not, I don't think we're gonna solve that tonight. I don't think we're gonna solve it tomorrow. I think it can be done, but Rick, you know better than I, you've been closer to it. Are there, are there scenarios that we should, should we spend the time to take a look at cost reduction?
Well, the contractor said that they would hold this price until September, you know, through September.
That's wonderful news, and very generous of the contractor.
And like you said, we can do the mechanic street lot to get that done, and then revisit Washington Street.
But then the question, I, I don't think, I don't know if it is just about finance. It's about...
Well, it's not only about that. It starts with that element, because I, I mean, I think we want to discipline a process. Never mind a, a public outreach, we'll discuss that in a second, but I think the, I think the, the, the fact that we need to bring projects when they want to prove the money i- is, is really important, because we don't have unlimited, every project can come in and will come in over budget. We just have to, when you come to the select board and you want to bring a project in here and it's over budget, what are, what are we gonna do? That's, that's the, the easy part is to bid it out and come in and say, this is what the price is. The hard part is to make it fit in the finance plan, the capital plan. We have a capital plan. We have to fit it. We're working very hard to manage tax increases to a nominal amount year in and year out. It's not easy, as everybody knows. Not preaching to choir, I know, but, but this is the example, another example of how we creep in, for all the best reasons, we creep into budget creep. And that's not acceptable to me. That, that element. Then there's a second, there's another element, which is, yeah, I don't know, can anybody discuss what public outreach was done with this design?
As I quoted, as I said in my presentation, 100, you know, 175 public citizens came, we had five public worker group meetings on the downtown.
Master plan, right.
That's where our whole lead and guidance and inspiration came.
Okay, that's clear.
And you know, this master plan has no parking on that parking lot.
It's a building, so if, for me, if we were turning it into affordable housing and allowing more people to live in Camden that could then walk to these places, that would be different. It would, it would, but it's also...
We actually have more living downtown at the, at the, at the, at the apartments in the, on the...
It's not what we asked voters for. If, if we're gonna redesign, ask mon, ask for money to redesign something, then we have to ask voters for that. Maybe we put this out and people say, yeah, let's do it and let's pay for it. But in this case, that's not, we said, can, we have $210,000 to maintain our current infrastructure, and then we're doing...
Actually, you know, Paul Cabal, who's led our halfback over here, who served on the budget committee then...
He was with me.
Yep.
Yep.
But they, but he, his recollection of that budget committee meeting talked about that this, because we're adding these new spaces, something could be done on this lot, because you're add, going after those spaces on Knox Mill and...
From a parking lot quantity perspective.
From a quantity standpoint.
The negative feedback we've gotten has been pretty overwhelming, but...
Well, Mark, Mark and I, I served on the parking committee. I was the first committee I ever worked on in 1988 and 1989 when I came here. Parking is a sacred cow in this community. There isn't any, any doubt about it. And no matter what you propose, yes, there's gonna be a lot, a lot of blowback.
Yeah.
But also, there are lots of studies that we have more parking spaces in this country. I mean, like, I don't know, how many, 50 parking spaces in this country for every car? And some of our parking spaces are underutilized for reasons other than accessibility.
Absolutely.
I mean, there are problems with two-hour limits, some of these recommendations are takeout time limits, put the pay and display, that actually encourages more turnover in parking spaces.
Metered parking. I, I think meter parking would be fine, but apparently that's.
Pay-in display, that actually makes, creates more turnover. Studies have been done.
True.
And with the wayfinding system.
That's true.
That directs people to the free, long-term parking lot that has electrical vehicle charging. And more people are drawn to utilize those lots. I, you know, I understand about the blowbacks and stuff. I've been involved in this since 1989, so I know. You can't please everybody.
Hey, I, I have to say one thing. Um, I've been coming into town sometimes two or three times a day for these meetings for a bunch of years now. I have never not been able to park downtown. I've always found a space. You know, it, it's, sometimes it's the lot, sometimes it's further down on mechanic, sometimes it's Norton. I've never not been able to find a space to park. You know, it's, you know, sometimes, again, I think it's people are resistant to change and it's, it's, it's human nature. Um, I think if we went forward with this, found a way to go forward, people would adapt and like it and be very happy with it. And, you know, they would still be able to find places to park. I don't see that as a problem.
And maybe we'll get there. Maybe through this process we'll get there, but.
Yeah, we're, we're inching towards it, I think. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Hey, Todd.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, Todd Anderson, uh, 1 Elm Street and sometimes 10 Bonnie Bray when I get home. Um, I just had to say a couple of things. First of all, these plans are all gorgeous. I mean, who wouldn't want this as a parking lot? But as a business owner, my wife and I own French and Braun, for if it doesn't know. Um, and we, uh, parking spaces, especially downtown, are worth their weight in gold to business owners. Because, I mean, I, I love the fact now that, that there's, uh, you guys took over the skate or possibly taking over the skate park. That's great for us to send our employees, it's great for us to send whatever, send people up there. No one's going to come into town and go park up there and come down and get a half gallon of milk and a dozen eggs.
That's true.
They're going to drive right by us if they don't see the spots. Um, we have about a dozen people now that come down our back alley, through our back door, which is basically coming through someone's basement to come into their house.
I've seen that.
Because they say there's no parking on Elm and Mechanic. And so now we're talking about taking away from here. Now, I know that's a perception, they've gotten used to that, that they probably, if they went around the block, there may be one. But that's reality is that's what they're doing. And so now you're going to take away this spot because I noticed that too, is that you, back here, this is all permitted. So if you're taking away six or seven spots, that means this is going to become a town lot, pretty much. So you've taken away all this. Um, this here, I've heard many people say to me, this is a godsend because they said there's a lot of turnover in this parking lot. The, nine times out of 10, park in here. And the other thing that, you know, I was, as I was sitting here watching this, this actually makes a natural change of direction. If you come this way and you see parking's tied up or whatever, you can go around through here. And, you know, with this whole, I mean, I've cut through here before because I was leaving a car for someone or doing whatever. And I've met other cars and you just have to kind of wait your turn and be, I, I guarantee probably two cars can't meet there and go. I've never tried it. I just wait for the other person to come through. And so, like I said, the plans are all great, but downtown space for, for retailers and for anyone just doing a quick errand, no one's going to do a quick errand. You got to go sign something with your lawyer. You're not going to just go park three blocks, eight blocks away and come walking out. That's, I just had to throw that stuff in.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I just want to ask a question. I'll, I'll direct. So the contract parking in Washington Street parking lot, is that town people?
The, yeah, so the spaces that would be left, the back spaces.
Okay.
The majority of those would be town employees and some are private spaces or spaces that are leased to, um.
What if we did move the town people to Norton Street?
We could do that.
It helps. Yes, well, we get to mid, as, as Allison said, if we do what we preach, I would agree with that completely.
I mean, I would, I would say that, um, yeah, I, I think there's a way that we could do it that would be fair because.
Right, right, fair.
A lottery, you know, we'd have a few that.
I, I mean.
You could also rotate, take turns.
I think that some of, okay, I'll, this is outside of the discussion of this, but I, I think that there's a way that we could do it that would be.
I think so too.
Yeah.
I think so too. But if I had been, we come back to going forward, we do have, we do have, I mean, you don't want to keep dragging this out either because it's been gone on too many years. Enough is enough. But I think we have also got an opportunity and just because the contractor wants to give us till September, uh-uh, that's too long.
Well, and I, I mean, I think it's a hard decision, but I think that, you know, you've got pretty, pretty strong options as to what you, well, there are some things that I think that you need to tell, like principles of what it is that you want us to do and we don't need to go through a big redesign.
Right.
Process because as you've seen.
Right.
From Andrew's work.
Been there, done that.
It's like they've, every possible scenario has been discussed. So I, I really think just giving us direction on what you all think are the most important aspects of this and then we can move forward.
Okay, no matter which way we move forward, we're going to hit budget.
Absolutely.
Within reason. I mean, I understand, you know, plus and minus, I understand stuff.
I mean, I, I would say, Bob, that there's, there's, we can get this to within about 25,000 and then we're going to have to look.
Yeah.
And we need to figure out how much has been spent on design too.
Well, yeah, that's one, that is a concern. I, I don't, I mean, I'm the first to done it in my own business. When you play the shell game with money and, oh, I didn't spend that on that one, I spent it from another budget. Um, we have to be careful of that too because I, I have to believe.
Right, and I mean, I can't, you know.
I understand.
That money's already been spent, so.
It's been done.
But I'm saying for now, when it comes to construction, I think we can get you to within 25,000.
A 10% margin is fine.
Right.
That, that's always been the band of accuracy, in my opinion. We've done it a thousand times already.
And I'm talking, that's pretty basic, that's like.
So, so that's criterion one, um, I think. Then, then you can discuss the other criteria as far as design goes, as far as what we prefer to see in terms of major design elements or not.
Can we bring this back? I mean, I, I personally feel a tiny bit saturated on this and that maybe we're not at the point where we can make our very best decisions tonight about what's the, you know, marching orders. I think.
And that, that's fine, I think that's fine.
You know, maybe we've been talking about this for years, but it's come to the select board twice and once was fairly quickly, so.
Must have had some tough conversations today.
I think the select board, the select board has to provide the criteria and when, you know, if we don't, all I'm saying is I just don't think, yeah, I just don't think this is one of the things because I, I know there's been a lot of work put into this and it gets so frustrating when you've done all of that work with the best of intentions and hard work and then somebody says, oh, yeah, but, um, and then drags it off another three months. Mm-mm, it's not going to happen. We, if we're going to do any kind of a rediscussion of criterion elements, it has to happen at the next select board meeting, which is the 26th, it's not that far away, but I think we have to have that at that point. If we're going to, if we're going to defer it, we can discuss it now.
Taylor would be here as well.
Well, that's one of my little bit of concerns because I was a little concerned about voting on anything tonight because, well, there's four of us here and, I mean, the worst thing that could happen is, I'm not saying it would happen, it could be a two-to-two vote and that's not going to be, help us at all. No. Well, well, I know, but it, it doesn't get us going forward, Deb. So, you know, I, I, I think we can, we can bring to the table a proposal on the 26th for criterion from the select board's perspective with five of us. Um, one of the top ones is still going to be the budget thing. We have to have that. I think, Deb, you're all the person I know that respects numbers and spreadsheets as much as I do. Um, that, that's, that's, and by the way, this is a little bit of a signal to other groups and committees that, you know, that work on stuff. It isn't just the design committee. There are many who get involved in this stuff and then come back with, you know, kind of fait accompli recommendations and we say, wait a minute, this great idea, absolutely perfect ideas, but they don't fit the financial aspects of the town.
Um, one thing about your timing, um, part of the reason to have Rafi here and to talk about sort of our next steps on the design plan was to move forward with creating the public art on that wall. And one of the things, one of the major things we need to do is raise money and also find time for the people that are helping us to be able to do it.
Right.
And so we were certainly hoping that the construction project on Mechanic Street would be done by the end, end of May, so we can get the wall with a base coat painted and we could start, you know, even installation if we raised our money by then. The longer you put that off, the longer it'll be for that next, next project to come, which doesn't require time money because this is all happening on private property and we're having to raise money for that privately. And the other thing I would like to say, um, because you're, you're going to do this at the next meeting, we don't have another design team meeting till, uh, April the 9th, I think it's that second Tuesday. So I'm going to canvas our members since you, I know that you all are going to talk about what criteria are most important to you. Most of the design elements that, um, are in sort of the ultimate design that we looked at aren't really finan, don't impact the finances. It impacts.
Understand.
Politically, not financially. And I am, you know, we understand that.
Understood.
Um, but I would like to poll our committee. I can say sort of right off the top, I think Rafi and I and numbers, I'll feel like the stairs ought to stay in from one lot to another. I mean, that retaining wall has to be done.
Oh, yeah.
No matter what else we do.
Oh, yeah.
The resurfacing has to be done.
Right.
No matter what else you do.
Right.
But making it a logical design, if you're wanting to maximize the most spaces that you possibly can and meet as many state, current today's standards, I think would be important in whatever you do on that lot. But I'll canvas the design team.
Please.
To try and come up with the top priorities and we'll pass that on to you.
Deb, also, um, because I don't get it.
We actually, I think, did a year ago.
That'd be great, by the way, but, um, could, if the, if the construction on Mechanic Street didn't move until, I'd just say, fall, could, could the wall be done before that?
So what's the wa, how far along is the design on that? I know maybe we don't have a say, but since it's a town committee, then, I mean, the design, the design on.
The public art?
The public art, is there a, is there going to, is there already a, sorry, design?
Concepts, we have concepts, yes. And because we were doing private fundraising and it's not on town property, um, we weren't, we, and because again, until recently, we were really part of the downtown network board and, and not, not a town committee. We weren't having, uh, we weren't designing the wall by committee.
Right, right.
Just like I wouldn't design a parking lot by committee.
Be a goodwill generator to.
Pardon?
But when you, you know, there are pros and cons to becoming a town committee and as I'm sure.
I've been on many of them, Allison.
I, I know. Um, and I think it would be great to get, to see the design if there is.
You saw a little bit of a preview.
I'm asking if there is, is that what it is or is it still open?
It's, it's in the works and that's sort of the heart of the design which you saw, but we're still, we actually had some discussions this afternoon about some alterations and changing and we're moving forward with that concept.
But to my, to my.
People oriented, a strong.
A strong woman looking at our notable past, but also looking into the future, so we're using a young person that's.
Sexual discrimination.
Um, also looking at the water and the fish migration.
Sure, sure.
Oh.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful.
Okay, perfect. Magic words. Elders are, are eels.
They're not eels.
Just answer, answer my naive question, why can't the wall proceed without the.
Well, um, you don't want to, uh, paint the wall and then have, uh, the parking lot dug up and new asphalt laid. Um, and you want to be able to do it after the construction because we're going to have to bring in a lift to have somebody paint the wall. And so we really don't want to do it and then have the surface disturbed.
Maximize, you know, efficiency, efficiencies. Also, it's hard to know, like right now with the proposed plan, that, that space is free of cars. With the other ones, you have cars sitting right in top of whatever the mural is, so.
So does the mural have to come, does the artwork have to come up and so it doesn't get hit by cars parking up against the wall?
You can't tell me any parking, uh, murals I've seen done on the West Coast that were done in major construction, buildings occurred next door right afterwards. I don't agree with the construction sequence thing. You can do the mural before the parking lot construction.
Yeah, I mean.
Believe?
If we have the funding, so that's the other thing. And, and that's, and that's what we were providing to the task.
Oh, no, I, I, yeah, I.
Funding, you know, of $12,000, $15,000.
I, I understand, Robbie, I'm just saying, I just don't, I didn't, I heard there's a sequence thing and I'm just telling you, I don't agree with that sequence.
Do you think we could do the wall before you did the parking lot?
Absolutely.
We're just.
If you wanted to.
We sure would like to know what this, we certainly will need to know what the schedule is.
Yeah.
So we'll figure it out.
Yeah, just.
I think the mural is really great. I think we all, you know, we've heard about it for a long time. A lot of people, like, is there a mural that's going to happen? And so I, I think we're trying to express enthusiasm and support.
It'll make a huge difference on that lot, in that corner.
Oh, it's huge. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm saying do it as fast as we can. All right, thank you very much, Deb and Rafi and Andrew and everybody for all your years of hard work.
Thank you. I'm sorry if that was a frustrating conversation.
It could have been worse.
Moves forward.
Um, on our last item on the agenda, just it was a snowball update. Um, Jody did do another package today which suggested we're over, uh, we're under budget by $100,000, maybe a little more.
I'd say that a, a good way to describe it is our, um, our revenues are exceeding our expenses by about $100,000.
Yep, that's correct. That's $100,000. And, and that includes last week's, uh.
Yes, the most recent payroll.
Includes last week's payroll and it includes, um, it includes the, um, income from the weekend at the, at Snowball, which is pretty darn good.
Um, do we have, um, um, I know that they're going to try and stay open as late as possible, which has gotten really positive reviews. Um, but can you explain why the decision is to only stay open on weekends?
Yeah, thank you.
I just think that, you know, that's kind of the default this time of year, but I think that if, um, this is a, this is a good year if we want to open up more.
The snow conditions I think are as strong at this point of the year as they've ever been. The snow pack is, is pretty huge.